This conference will now be recorded.
9:30 we get the speakers working, everything's working hopefully. Probably a meeting to order. And Sarah Brokaw.
Mr. LaShire, here. Ms. Holloway.
Yes.
Mr. Jensen, here. Ms. O'Connell.
Here.
And Mr. Pitch.
Here.
First order should be acknowledging Ms. O'Connell's difficulty in being here and to allow her to participate by phone. So, okay. Mr. LaShire, seconded by Mr. Jensen. All in favor?
Aye.
Budget, please.
I put three things to the flag. The United Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Okay. Before we approve the agenda, okay, just, I want to just make sure that I'm running the meeting. When we had the closed-door session the other time, I really liked it, that one person talked at a time. That's the way this meeting's going to be run. We cannot record the minutes properly, nothing can be recorded properly if multiple people are speaking. So from now on, one person talks. That's it. And keep it to the point. You know, three minutes, you should be able to get your point across.
Do you want a running clock?
Yeah, you know, it can just be. And this meeting is not going to address those towers, proposed building of anything that's going on over across the street because we don't have the information and it's a county issue and thank goodness, Mr. Castro's coming here doing a great job and helping us out. Maybe he can answer some questions if there's anything dealing with development area. Okay. So after that, that's about all I've got to say.
You want to go ahead and approve the agenda?
So, well, it's, there'd be all right with the agenda because we let.
We sent a amended agenda that's got a new 12G, some discussions on utility going. That would be the amended agenda we requested you approve.
We're going to approve it. In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now we get audience comments on the agenda, I guess?
Yes.
Anything specific? No? Okay. Mr. Castro, floor is yours.
You want me to stick?
Up here.
Up here, that way we. Sure, I'll whichever way you want to face, just be near that.
Oh, okay, okay. First off, thank you for inviting me. I think this is like my third town hall since I was elected in November and probably more than you had in the last 20 years from previous commissioners. So I'm not ashamed to say that because one of the things I heard from residents here when I was campaigning is, we're the forgotten end of District One. And some people sort of accepted that, I don't. And so I hope you've read and seen that through the commissioner, some of the things I partnered with y'all on, the Marine Store, you know, you've seen some improvements over there. We filled some potholes that were long overdue in the parking lot. That parking lot is already in next year's budget to be repaved. You know, you all are talking to me about the needing a generator for the Marine Store. So if we ever got hit with a Katrina or Irma or any of those things, you could buy milk, you could buy bread, we could pump gas. And so the latest on that is if you're, you might, they may or may not know, during the last tropical storm, we did bring a generator out, generator, generator out here before the storm. It'll always be that way because when I went back to my counterparts in the county, they said, well, we have a generator, it's a port of the islands on it, and after the storm passes, we'll drive it on down there. And as you know, that's, I actually don't think that's a good plan because, you know, if the stretch down here is covered in trees or whatnot, you'll be the forgotten part of District One. So it'll always be repositioned. One of the reasons why we're not going to leave it out here, and originally it was, we're going to get a generator and leave it out here, we can store it better. It's stored in an air-conditioned, climate-controlled building at the Emergency Operations Center. Those are the guys that deliver it rather than sort of it being moved around here, somebody bumps into it and it's not working properly. We can also service it and before it comes out here, they'll check it, it's working, boom, the port of the islands generator. We're not going to bring it out here for the storm that's coming through now because it's just going to be a heavy rain weather event. But always know that I'm going to be monitoring if I think it's something that could cause a power outage or, you know, it's an issue, then, you know, I'll talk to your leadership here or it'll, it'll just show up. So as you also might know, we have connections now to the Marine Store, so we just, fire regulations, cop regenerator, that's the kind of fire department. And so, you know, that's a, that's a good thing. But, you know, I promise you, and I have friends that live out here, so I'm the District One County Commissioner, not the East Naples County Commissioner. And so whether it's Goodwin, Isles of Capri, Port of the Islands, every part of District One is important. And we have a lot of neglected areas that need attention. With me today, I brought Amy Patterson. So Amy is the Deputy County Manager. So our new county manager is Mark Isaacson. And one of the immediate changes that he made is he, he brought in two deputies that he promoted up from the staff. So Sean Callahan is one deputy and Amy is the better deputy. Okay. Now, Amy's a superstar, she's worked for the county a long time and one of the reasons why I wanted, I brought her here and she's come to a few town hall meetings with me is I don't want to be one of those commissioners that says, oh, I don't know the answer to that, I'll get back to you. And I don't know the answer to everything. Amy's my go-to for everything. She knows a little bit about everything and a lot of it about everything. Finn is here, he recently got a promotion. He's in charge of facilities, all facilities in Geyer County, but also is a wealth of knowledge. So some of the questions that have come to me ahead of time where we have some questions about millage rate and pack fees. You want to talk about what's going to happen to that hotel there, what's not going to happen, what do we know? Everything is on the table and I can tell you, I'll be flabbergasted if between the three of us, we leave here with something unanswered. But, you know, having said that, I really came here for more of Q and A. I think I've talked with you all enough since we've been elected, we've gotten an awful lot done in District One of the time. And if there's more to be done here, you guys know how to get ahold of me. When you call my cell phone number, I answer it. When you, if I don't, it goes to voicemail, I personally get back with everyone. If you send me an email, I'm the only one that has access to my inbox. I might not answer your email in five minutes because sometimes I get 500 a day. But I tell you, we'll get back with you in a couple of days or that day. I try to triage them a little bit, you know, see, you know, the big ones. Sometimes it's like a three-page email about flooding in some lady's backyard and, you know, I might not jump on that one. So much of that all over the county. But if you send me a note, rest assured, you know, I'll do my very best to get back with you as quick as possible, but you will hear from me. I hope some of you are getting my newsletter, the Commissioners Report. I send it out about every 10 days. It's not a cotton paste of a bunch of websites and, you know, a spam-type newsletter. I personally write every word of it. My system makes it pretty, but it's basically to give you, you an idea of maybe some big things that are coming up or some places that I've visited, not to say, oh, look what I'm doing. But, you know, I want the county to know about the Wounded Warriors Association or our Daily Grant, some things like that. I get a lot of replies back when somebody says, I didn't know that organization existed. But most importantly, after, after commissioner meetings, I summarize some of the big nuggets that happen during the meetings and also my vote. So if there was a vote on something controversial, whether you agreed or disagreed with it, I don't run away from my vote. So if you want to talk about it. But as I said in my last Commissioner Report, one thing that I tell citizens is if we agree or disagree on one vote, hopefully you'll, my report card will be my entire four-year term and all of my votes. So, you know, I get back notes sometimes from some people, oh, you, you voted this way on this one particular thing, you're dead to me. And I'm like, well, you know, the county has a $2 billion budget and the five county commissioners manage that $2 billion. There's a bit more than just sort of one vote on M.A.S. or one vote on, recently we had the Bill of Rights and the Constitution, sanctuary city proposal that came from citizens. It wasn't something that came from the county that brought it to us and you voted on it. So I'm happy to talk about any vote. And then if we agree to disagree, then we move on to the next thing. There's so much that's, that's on the plate right now that we need to do. So I would hope that, you know, you would sort of look at everything. Most people do, but some don't. But if you want to get my Commissioners Report, you're not getting it, just send me an email. Go to my Facebook page and my email's right there. I can give you my business card right now and you can send me a note. That report goes out to almost 18,000 people, that's how many we have in the database, 18,000. And several of the people in that database are presidents of HOA, who's in a chair with 3,000, 4,000 people and Artesia, Feathers Creek and so, you know, potentially reach probably over 20,000 people. And like I said, I send it out about every 10 days. But since then, what questions do you have? Why, this got something for you to make, Ed, or, or, why don't you guys sound a little closer so if you answer a question, you'll be on the line.
Sir. Doctor, Becky back there contacted me evidently, and I don't have this right, he can inform me. The fire station is losing, I believe, the only EMT that we have. Is that, am I saying that right, Doc?
What's that?
We have an ambulance out here, so the, they have some EMS.
Okay. But. Okay, so what are we, what are we losing? I haven't heard what it is.
A first responder.
Okay, but, but we had it, we had it. And who told you we're losing it, where'd you get that from?
He's on the board.
Fire? Is it, maybe it's real news, but.
The agreement with Cora County EMS. But we're supplementing still with our people there.
But if the agreement, if the agreement ended, have we tried to renegotiate it or we let it end and now we're, we're back 13 years?
Well, me, as far as negotiating, the Cora County EMS, they're being able to, they have a swap agreement this end of September.
Okay.
So. But there's going to be, you know, we're going to keep people there.
Okay.
As far as, Cora County, let it be an auto truck.
Okay.
No ends.
Okay.
That's the key, a first responder to this population. Because the nearest ambulance is 30 minutes.
Yeah, I guess, and we'll, we'll take this back to the county because this is all news to me. But if I was the fire chief over there, well before September, I would let Port of the Islands digress 15 years. I'd be fighting to keep exactly what happened. And you guys aren't getting smaller, and I'm not, I'm not jumping on you. But this area isn't getting smaller, it's getting bigger. So I don't know why the fire station would be less manned.
It's not going to be less manned, but it's just that the ALS agreement with Cora County is.
The doctor over here said you're losing EMT or, so when that agreement ends, how will it change what's in the fire station? What, how will it change?
There'll be no Cora County paramedic on the fire techs, the boat will be armed.
So, so that is less, right?
And the demographic.
Yeah. Okay. But I mean, like I said, my, my, you know, we'll take that. My thing would be is if this has been a known thing, you know, we don't wait until September because once that person disappears, it's harder to get them back than to make sure they never leave. So I mean, we got, we have limited time here, so that's all, you know, I want to be, I'm going to freeze my mind. But if you hear that, don't, don't wait for me to come here.
He just found out the ordinance.
Yeah, but I'm going to have some questions for the fire department that's out here because if I worked in that fire station, I wouldn't want to lose anything, right? And so I'd be on the phone, you know, ringing, ringing it off the phone. Anyway, okay, so we'll take that back, that's, that's a good nugget. I mean, you got all of us here, I've never heard one thing about it, so. Yeah, go ahead.
And then thanks for the invitation, it's great to be out here. I've been, I kind of do a couple of things, I'm budget director and facilities management director. Couple of things on this EMS there. So there is a unit stationed in Everglades City.
Right.
And response time there is seven to 10 minutes.
Oh, no.
Enough. And there was an agreement to swap staff where a paramedic would swap to the fire truck here and a member of Greater Naples would swap to the EMS unit. And that just has kind of come apart a little bit. Nonetheless, that unit is still there and I can't, can't believe that the interchange of those personnel is completely dead. So I kind of hesitate to leave here saying that it's never going to happen again at what sounds like a beneficial program. So I'm just going to add that comment that I'm sure that eventually things are going to stabilize. The whole, the way it's provided out here is kind of interesting, if you might know. There is an on-chopping fire district, it's existed for many, many years. I can tell you when I was green as green can be, my first job here was doing that budget, actually. Some of you may remember Vince Dorr, he was the chief out here for many years. Quite fondly. So what I'm trying to say is, we currently have a partnership with Greater Naples Fire through the county. The county continues to collect the tax levy from the fire district and then essentially pays Greater Naples to provide the service. And we also supplement that millage with county funds to make them whole. So that's the kind of the partnership we have with Greater Naples. As that goes forward, the intent is for Greater Naples to incorporate this area into their fire district and levy the millage themselves. That may or may not result in a lower millage rate in this area. So that's kind of a broad overview. They're still working on, they're working on a new contract with them. Their obligation under that contract, in order to incorporate this area into the fire district, they need to get to the legislature, get the legislature to approve that change and then they will move forward, levy some of the millage themselves directly. And in concept, that would result in nominally lower millage here. But they would require the county basically to supplement the millage and make that whole. And I mentioned that, if it's in the negotiation stage, it's not fine.
The, this isn't my dog in the fire, Doc, running to me, he's on the fire for the truck. We have always had the Port of the Islands, this might as well be Ozampi today. And to put it succinctly, I have a general consensus. If Greater Naples can spend $700,000 to do over the fire station and if they're paying some people pretty heavily, 4% mill rate for fire tax, we can have a couple of EMTs here full time is how we're looking at it. Because the demographic and POI is eight and somebody could die in a couple of minutes. So waiting 30 minutes, could have been Everglades City, no. So we need to really fix that and not hope that there's an alliance. We need full-time EMTs.
Yeah, I've been told that hope really isn't a good place.
Yeah, I've been kind of, you know, I'm kind of going along with that. I appreciate that comment, thanks.
No, don't go away, you opened the door for me. Because you talked about millage rates.
Yes, sir.
Which ours is the highest in the county. And what I was wondering is how do you get to a rule change or a law change or a tax change? For example, my house, I pay about $2,500 a year in fire tax control. Now these mobile home sites, Seaman Brothers, West Wind, you have an $80,000 house on a lot, but they only play fire control on the value of the lot. So a house there, mobile home worth $80,000, a boat worth $250,000, whatever, pays $20 a year fire service tax. That doesn't seem right. How do you change that? How do you start taxing appropriately for these?
If I had the answer, I would truly be a miracle man.
Well, well, somebody's got to have the answer. I mean, we, we, the pill money that comes in here, we get the largest in the whole state, I did over 1.5 million and none of it comes to us, it goes to the general fund.
Well, that's, that's not completely correct. You're going to find the general fund actually distribute some of that pill into this fire district. To, in order to supplement, county supplements the millage that you folks pay in order to meet the contract requirements that set by the agreement between us and Greater Naples Fire. So.
But, but the merger of all this was to eliminate administration and reduce costs and make the millage rates equivalent throughout the county. So we're paid the highest, but we can't even have an EMT. I mean, something doesn't.
Okay. What have you had with EMTs there? I was thought of the partnership with Cora County EMS and having a paramedic. So our chief, could, chief, could you step up here so we have everything staff, staff always with an EMT? That's, you know, emergency medical technician, which is BLS, basic life support. Cora County provides the, you know, ALS and basic life support person. Our people will, we do have, we have mixed, mixed people, ALS, BLS and there'll always be EMTs on that truck, always, right?
Okay, but.
But the partnership as far as the ALS agreement and all that stuff, well, as of September, you know why? I couldn't answer that, I didn't negotiate that. The main fire chief and chief of EMS negotiates that.
What is ALS? What is that?
The advanced, I just looked.
Yeah. I'll tell you what it is. It's the difference in getting medications you need for stroke and choking and not getting. You say you don't have dogs inside.
You could be the dog. You could be the dog.
Okay, but getting, getting back to my point, how do we change the rules? How do we change the tax situation? Is that up to the legislature, the county? Who does that? Who has to promote this?
The, we got a couple of things. As long as it's an ad lour tax, the way it is, the way it is.
Ah, there it is. There it is. There it is.
I don't know what that means.
That means, that means it now, you know.
That means ad lour tax is what you're describing. Tax is based on the value of your property, you have four mills. And as you're pointing out, in a kind of situation you're talking about where you have a manufactured home sitting on a lot, the value of the lot is taxed, the value of the manufactured home just has a kind of a sales tax, it's kind of normal. It's a use tax, it's kind of nominal, it doesn't even touch on it. So yes, relative to the service provided to the two people in that home versus the two people in your home, you're paying more. What I'm describing to you is if their value is $40,000 on the lot and yours is whatever number it is, you're going to pay more because an ad lour tax, it's to the value of the property. Is it fair? Is it equitable? The answer is no. Is it the way things are done? The answer is yes. I don't have any children, just like some of you here in the school system. Nonetheless, 45% of your tax bill is paying a school tax.
It's an ad lour also?
No, it's.
An ad lour tax.
Ad lour.
Ad lour. To the value of the property.
Right.
To the value of the property. So you're saying it's point four, no matter which property, and it's based on the value of the property? And it's ad lour?
It's an ad lour tax.
Yes, sir.
That's your answer?
Yes, sir.
I didn't know that.
But I just don't understand how the house, the, it's, it's a thousand-fold difference.
Your, your concerns are absolutely fair.
So life is not fair.
Well, you and I both know that. I, I can't sit here and tell you anything that's a lie, right? Life isn't fair. It's our burden. If you just translate it into the school system situation, fair, the schools are seen as an overall benefit. People pay to the value of their property, that's the way it's done.
So wouldn't, would, why can't you change the way the bill money is distributed? Take it out of the general fund and apply it to the district where the lands are, where the money's coming from. The money's for certain specific lands and deal it into that.
Marco has that same argument, Mark, I believe, is Marco Island that comes back to it. So I mean, I just, just did a dozen town halls there and they have the same thing. Let me, I mean, I'm sure you don't want this to be a three-hour town hall meeting. And also, we're actually not going to change the tax law at this meeting. The bigger ticket that I have isn't so much about millage rate and all that. What I want to learn, I'm actually surprised that this contract, all of you is right corner is changing. I care more about the staff than, I'm not saying I don't care about the millage rate, but we're not going to change that this afternoon. But what I want, what I will find out, the homework assignment we're taking back is, what's your manning now in the fire station? How is, how would it change in September? Actually, I haven't heard that answer, I heard, I believe you heard, now we have our paramedics. Now we're losing our EMTs. So we will get down to the bottom of it. But I know Tabitha Butcher, she's the top EMS chief, I'm going to call her as soon as I leave here personally and say, make me smart off Port of the Islands, what do they have now? Are they losing anything in September? Because you're exactly right, you don't have to be 90 years old. I mean, an eighty-year-old child out here would need, you know, paramedic support. So it's not about a major population, not. In September, if I do nothing, yes or no? I mean, you work over there.
The county EMS, the agreement, there's, they'll have one paramedic open. So.
I have the homework assignment. I have the homework assignment. Confirm for the fire station what you have.
More paramedics over there, when, this is. I got the words, not EMT.
Okay, listen, I got it, I got it. You're losing something, you're not losing something, something's happening. Okay, my opinion is, you're not going to be smaller, you're getting bigger. I would hope that our strategy here would be that you wouldn't lose anything. I'm going to find out if you are losing something, why is it possible to make, to make sure you don't lose anything, okay? So the homework assignment's mine, I have all the input. We're not going to change the tax law here, we're not voting on it. Trust me, I got the exact same question that Marco. Why did we send $50 million over the bridge and then we get the last truckload of sand to restore beaches when we paid to restore Port Royal and Naples? I will tell you, part of that is my job to make sure that you do get the support you need here and that you don't lose the paramedic, you have five paramedics in Port Royal. That's why you need a strong county commissioner. I'm not saying I can change the tax law, but there's a whole bunch, and I haven't voted on it or voted against it. But the things that are within my power, you know, what I, what I've said from day one is, Port of the Islands isn't the redheaded child anymore. You're not the end of the universe. I heard from people here, we're according to the islands, whatever we get, we get. And that's just how it's always been. I'm here with two of the most senior leaders from the county and also your county commissioner. I'll, I'll come out here every, every week if you want me to. And a lot of people, I probably get just as many emails from Port of the Islands as I get from all of East Naples. You know what, that's a good thing. It's allowed us to, to make some immediate changes at the arena. And, you know, finally got the hotel torn down, the debris is gone. We can talk about that a little bit if you want, as to what the next steps are. But, you know, we're here to take action on the things we can. Here to get you answers on the things that maybe, you know, I can't change today, but to give you, you know, the right amount of information. But we're living here already with a couple of homework assignments. What else you got?
They've brought in, in the labyrinth around the hotel.
Okay. So the county still owns that property and there is nothing in negotiation at the county level at this point. So unless, so we don't, we don't know what we're doing with it or we don't have a plan to do something with it. Me personally, I don't like the county to be in the real estate business. I don't like us buying an $8 million golf course, it's $29 million. And I'm not a big fan of building $120 million sports parks, sorry if you guys disagree, that, that for people play on once a week. And so, so those are things I didn't vote on, but I wouldn't have voted for them. People ask me about the sports park. I am a supporter of it because it's already built. So now we're trying to make it successful. But I would build it in a much smaller stage, I mean, I'm not trying to get off topic, 10 fields. You know, the old adage of if you build a, is a poor strategy. One of the things I did want to tell you, and I open it every town hall meeting with this. How many of you know that the county bought the Golden Gate Golf Course, $29 million a while back? How many people know that? Okay. Know that the county built a $120-plus million sports park, how many people know that? Okay, all of you that raise your hands, you're wrong. The county didn't buy the golf course, we did, taxpayers did, okay? So same thing with the sports park. So one of the things that I encourage citizens to do is to stay plugged in a little bit about how our tax dollars are being spent. Some of you that might have tracked my vote, I was the lone vote against giving Great Wolf Lodge, a resort company that wants to come in and buy up a giant piece of acreage right next to the sports park. And they briefed us on this great wonderful plan, but the big deal breaker was they wanted $15 million from the county to sort of seal the deal. And I voted against that because I think a billion-dollar company that just bragged for 40 minutes about how lucky they were to build a resort in southwest Florida and how lucky they were to have a sports park in their backyard and how they were going to be able to leverage that to fill their resort. I don't think they needed $15 million Christmas gift. People in the county disagreed, they were going to build that resort regardless, okay? So I think they threw $15 million out there because if they would have thrown $50 million out there, we would have said, oh my God, you're crazy. And if they would have thrown $15 million out there, we probably would have said, oh, that's not all that much money. That is money, that's real money. And so, you know, I'm sure they were high-fiving each other in the parking lot. And there's people in the county that disagree with me and four county commissioners disagreed with me. But you know what, I think 99% of the citizens, the taxpayers, agree with me. me. But so my point though about those kind of things is it's our money. It's your money. And so, uh, you know, there's no elves in the basement that sort of are printing money and paying for these things. And so, uh, you know, be vocal with me about things that are coming up for a vote, um, or questions that you might have. And so just getting back to that property back there, holding onto it for infinity doesn't do anything for the county. So I'd like to figure out what the fair market value is for that property and, and do something with it. Sell it, turn it into something. Or you've all heard me say before, I'd rather see nothing built than the wrong thing. And so we're, we're, we're going to make sure the wrong thing doesn't, doesn't go there. Now, some people have said to me, why didn't the county just turn that into a park? Remember, the county doesn't build parks. You do. So I think people will say, oh, in Vanderbilt Beach, you know, you voted, um, you, you gave approval to build this big giant condominium there. The county should have not done that and just bought the property and made it apart. That would have been a forty million dollar park. Um, and I'm not sure that's how I want my tax dollars spent. And, um, you know, but, but we'll say, I'm not saying that couldn't be one, shouldn't be one, but right now there isn't a plan for something. You guys want to give me your input? Um, but I haven't heard from, from anybody, um, on what could go there. And the, and the focus was obviously get the hotel torn down, get the debris taken away. So, um, but I don't want to see that property sit vacant for, you know, the next twenty years.
Talking about the North Hotel, your contractor left us with a fairly large water bill.
Okay.
I mean, good contact came into us, who is incredible. But she says she died, but we still have a good deal.
Okay. Right?
Sir, and the other thing, when you're talking about the, the section at the back of the board, we're in the process of now looking at trying to do something that we need to name. And the old hotel would be a nice addition to what, as we're, so we're not saying, we're just saying, keep us in mind and we are.
And I've got a couple of those notes maybe from you, sort of saying. You guys wrote the first right of refusal. You don't want to hear that. A Hooners is being built back there. Only couple of you. Um, but you know what? We, I don't want, I'll, I'll ensure you're not surprised by something. And basically what you're asking is, hey, we'd like the first right of refusal. You know, the other thing I would, I would tell you is, um, I also voted, uh, uh, Bill McDaniel from District Five and I made a motion a few months ago that right now is county commissioners are on paid summer vacation. Um, uh, Bill McDaniel and I made a motion to cancel summer vacation and have, uh, paid summer vacation for the five commissioners to have us work through the year like everybody else in the universe. Uh, that actually ended, uh, fail three to two, but I don't need to vote to have me, you know, work as a county commissioner. So my parents didn't raise me that way. The military didn't train me that way. So whether there's a vote or not, but the negative thing is while the county commissioners are not in session, we can't vote on anything. And so, um, you know, the county commissioners that voted to keep vacation, their rationale wasn't so much to pay themselves and have a vacation, although maybe that was part of it. But their rationale was we don't want to vote on anything over the summer because so many people are gone. We don't want to squeeze anything through. Okay, first off, I, I said at that same meeting, um, okay, great, we won't vote on any billion dollar condos, which we do maybe once, you know, a year. Um, but all the other business of the county could still move through. So I mean, I have, I have three or four things right now that I know won't come to the commissioners till October, November, December, um, and they're small things. Um, and they need to come for, to, I mean, I'll just give you one example. We have a lady that came here. She's the, uh, the president and C E O of a foundation that, um, combats childhood drowning. It's called Connor Cares, the Connor Cares Foundation. Her son in two thousand and six drowned, um, in Maryland, and she's made it her life's work to make sure there's A E Ds and trained lifeguards at every public pool. Her son drowned in a public pool that had lifeguards that were in the parking lot talking on the phone and A E Ds on the wall that nobody was trained to use. She came here and donated, donated a two thousand dollar A E D to the county. The reason I can't hang it on the wall is because the five county commissioners have to vote to accept A E Ds like that. So that A E D is sitting in somebody's office probably till November because when the commissioners come back at the end of September, we have a huge backlog of things that haven't approved over the summer. So that A E D probably won't come up for a vote. And it's little things like that. Um, although I have an audience of Parkland and the county manager to say, um, you know, can we grandfathom this? Because there's, there's also some things that the county manager can approve and then it comes to the commissioners afterwards for sort of, to make it formal, but we did move forward. Uh, what is, what is it called that? Yeah, yeah, essentially. Um, so, you know, I mean, it's things like that, but, uh, but to your point about the property, I mean, I think the best thing would be to, you know, work some sort of a deal so that you guys can do what, what you want of it. I will definitely keep my radar on and also I'm going to take back as a homework assignment. Okay, the debris is gone and everything. Uh, are we selling it? Are we waiting for somebody that we're in, we're in no negotiations now with anybody and we're not, because like I said, you guys want the first right of refusal.
They did a nice job of cleaning it up. I mean, that was a monster. I don't think anybody realized how much concrete was there. That thing's a bunker, you know, but they really did do ultimately a nice job.
Right. Yeah. Finally, she has a test.
Yeah, it's, it's, I mean, they did a nice job. Nobody thought it was going to look like that when it was done.
Frank.
Yes, sir. Frank.
Frank, we go to the store, Eric. Yes, sir. I wanted to just tell everybody here, we worked on a project a long time ago. Billion dollar project. C I P helped us. Yeah, my local people helped us. But we had a lot of, also a billion dollar budget. One of these, we were not interacting today. And we think, the official actually came to us and said, I'm here, I'm collecting itself. Oh, we did. That's the result. And what happened in my former years, you know, that I've seen this effect. The people down there did not treat us as though we were enemy of some. Official had called and said, do something. They said, what can we do to help? The fact, we're the dialogue. And I can tell you today, our budget is very. We did a half billion dollar blessing. Well, oh, yes. Yes, sir. And, and our probably that is what, you know, four, five people, you know, expressed concern. They shared their perspective. But I, but I, what I would say to this, the key to this is it wasn't the commissioner telling you, you good official, do something. But he said, help these people. He worked with us a couple of times. We came back to Stafford. We have a great relationship, county officials now. And we trust them. So you didn't heard that old joke about, hi, I'm from the federal government. It's not a joke. I'm certain.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. But I mean, like I, I told you all when I was running, I'm not a politician. I retired Air Force Colonel that has, you know, been a public servant my whole life. Served for twenty-four years. You know, I brought me to Naples. I was competing to be the C O O of Physicians Regional. I did that for about five years and then I was an executive at a bow hospice. So thank you all that have done service and chief, you know, to you and your team back there and to my colleagues here, you know, we're all about service. And, uh, you know, one of the things I also have said at town hall meetings, you all have heard squeaky wheel gets the oil, right? Um, that's not my problem. Priorities get the oil. And too much in District One, the squeaky wheel has gotten the support. Somebody that knew the prior commissioner, you know, went to lunch and then all of a sudden, you know, they, they needed a stop sign on a corner and it appeared in a week. I'm not saying that that's a good or a bad thing, but we need to really start focusing on priorities. We need to make sure that we're spending the money wisely. You know, that generator over there, the arena, that's a big thing. Repaving a parking lot that wasn't even in the budget. I mean, you know, get, getting it in there. Um, you know, I think one of the things I had said is if that parking lot existed in Fort Royal, it'd be paved three times a year. And we got to get away from that and more towards the priorities. And, you know, I pledged to you that District One, I don't care if it's the far ends of District One or the center of East Naples, we have work to do and we're going to make sure everybody gets their fair share. And we're going to do it in a, a customer service, uh, type of, 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 of focus. As Amy's heard me say before, and I, I'm sincere when I say this, you're my, you're the bo, you're the boss. I'm the employee. Doesn't necessarily mean, you know, some citizens say, well, we tell you how to vote. We tell you how to do this. One of the reasons why I elected county commissioner is so that I can do the homework. And if, and if a vote, uh, happens, even if you disagree with it, I want you to trust that I did a deep dive into the, into the homework about the issue. I mean, I also say, and I know Bill McDaniel hates me to say this and has chastised me before, but I am the only full-time county commissioner. I'm not an attorney. I don't leave the office to go check on my R V lot or my water park or my law practice or my photography business. And I'm not saying that to be sarcastic to my colleagues, but I did have those, uh, you know, consulting company and some other businesses. I, this is a full-time job. So, you know, I'm proud to say that I'm doing this job full-time and I'm active service. And, you know, if you send me an order, call me and I'll answer it right away because I'm answering somebody else's, you know, message. But there's a lot to do out here. Um, and we're going to make sure that it's done and we're going to make sure that, you know, the fire station doesn't get smaller. I mean, on the flip side, I would hope it would stay the same or get larger at some point. So, but, you know, we're looking here with several homework assignments and, um, we're going to fix the, the military by the end of the day. I mean, I'm going to call for a vote and it'll be one, nothing. Those words and, um, you know, like I said, we have a lot. There's been some discussion too over by the marina, you know, there's, the county owns a piece of property there, sort of fragmented there. So if anybody's sort of curious, we're in discussions about, you know, somebody, there's a couple of, um, owners that might be here that want to put up book storage and whatnot. And, you know, we'll say nothing. You know, one of the things I want to make sure is that you all as a senior leadership supported the island, I was telling Amy, I said, you're not going to find a thousand people at this meeting. You're going to find the senior leadership and other citizens that want to attend and, you know, you guys get the word out. But, you know, my goal is to make sure you don't get blindsided like something. If you hear something that pops up, um, you're flabbergasted by, don't assume I know about it. So make sure, you know, that I hear, um, and we'll continue to work together. What other questions? Always like people that sit, uh, uh, all the way in the back, there's always somebody that sits up. See, I knew it. See? I'm sorry. Oh, you, you still work there? Were you there when I was there? Oh, you were, were you a nurse?
Um, no, I work.
Oh, okay. Oh, I still hear from those folks a lot and usually it's a reminder of recommendation to have them, they're trying to get a job elsewhere. I'm just kidding. It's been a few. It's been, it's been a few. Like great hospital and N C H as well. I always said, people say there are too many hospitals and, um, I, in, uh, Cora County, and I always say competition's a good thing. I mean, I used to say to Dr. Weiss, and I know we didn't agree with it. I said, I, I would hope we collaborate more than we compete. Now, I don't think he believes in that, but I can tell you Paul Hiltz, who's the new C E O at N C H, not new anymore. He's actually been there two years and I actually, he called me at six thirty this morning about, um, N C H getting blasted on Facebook and I, too, because I go over to N C H and if you walk into any hospital, it's mandatory to wear a mask. And I went to an event at N C H that honored first responders and military that have, have died and they have a little memorial there. And I put a page, a picture on my Facebook page wearing a mask and all the people that think that that's unconstitutional and, you know, the world's going to end and whatnot. But, uh, you know, blasted me and being a N C H supporter and I'm a communist now. The mind of mine was, um, I don't, I wouldn't have voted for the mask mandate. I think it should be citizen choice. Um, I think, um, masks have value, but citizens should decide that. So if you're really worried about COVID, either wear a mask, get vaccinated or stay home. Um, so like, you know, uh, you know, decides that right. But N C H is going to honor first responders and military. Um, and I actually said this on my Facebook post, and they wanted me to wear a wedding dress and a top hat and walk in there to, to honor those people. I would do it without question. So I didn't question putting on a mask. And also too, if you know anything about healthcare, I would expect N C H as a, as a triple, you know, of, of, you know, protection, just like every hospital nationally, um, would have. And the other thing I said on my post, whenever, when, you know, people were, um, blasting me, I said, wow, I hope your grandmother who lives in Connecticut doesn't pass away this weekend because if she does, you actually won't be able to go to the funeral because it's mandatory to wear a mask on, on airlines. And so, uh, and then I got a bunch of likes from people who sort of agree with me on that. No, I wasn't saying that's what you mean, but, you know, N C H isn't, you know, um, doing something, you know, uh, exclusive, you know, here in Cora County. I think they do a great job and, um, Paul Hiltz, the C E O there is amazing. I mean, I feel like what's that? Oh, I didn't, I didn't know. Well, I can't say I like it better. I just said, I like it better. I know a lot about physicians, so I have to get up to speed on some N C H things and Paul's really been great to pull me in. And you might have known, I, you might not have, but about a month or so ago, I went to Physicians Regional and I brought Tabitha Butcher for me and I had some senior leadership from New Florence Center, from the Emergency Operations Center and some other senior leaders with me. About a dozen of us went over there and Scott Lowe, who's their C E O, uh, gave us a, a briefing and a walk through and whatnot. So, uh, you know, gotta, gotta make sure that all of our hospitals and our first care centers and whatnot are supported. But, you know, thanks for what you do as a frontline worker in healthcare. It's a tough time right now. What else?
Okay, let's get the hell out of here, right? This is not anything you can do.
Oh, great. Nothing I can do.
This is, this is just an opinion.
There's a house in Fort Royal too.
Possible. No, this is just an opinion.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, twenty years ago or so, we have that land back there and, uh, some of these properties hit, um, we have these assessments that are put on these properties, okay? Like that one fifty acres, there's an assessment on that property that was put on there, say twenty years ago when the guy bought it for ten million dollars. And, uh, the assessments essentially add up to, um, on top of county taxes and that exclusive of county taxes, just our water assessments, two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars a year. So if somebody buys that property, we immediately hit them with two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars a year before they put a shovel in the ground. Well, that's because we, we, that's because we put so many E R Cs in it. Now that's our decision. That has nothing to do with the county. So in your opinion, is that a wise choice? And it's been open for ten years with no development because nobody can afford to pay those E R Cs on top of the value of the land?
Well, I was, I was going to ask.
We're, you're talking about the C D D.
The C D D.
Yes, right. So the C D D was, uh, developed using a financing mechanism. That financing mechanism then becomes a responsibility of the individual property.
There is no debt.
All right.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
There, there is no debt. It's been paid on.
I understand, but the original debt, but is what was, uh, being recovered through the, the underlying, not exactly, underlying assessment.
The underlying, the assessment is based on utility usage.
Yeah, we have utility.
Right. Water source, renovation. And so the engineer determines what is the utility need and breaks that down to a per E R C basis. So.
Based on what the original, based on what the original owner of that property decided to develop it as.
The overall owner of the, of the islands.
At first it was.
Question you're asking is what?
Well, I mean, we have the ability to change that. It was originally one E R C per acre, which is county or state mandated or something like that?
Uh, no, but it's in the original documents that established the C D D.
Right. Or the assessment methodology that was used.
Yes. Okay. So, but now we have the ability to change that, correct? This is not like an ad valorem.
Can't answer that question.
Okay, well, we can ask that later. And I just thought maybe, you know, but I mean, business-wise.
So you're looking for an opinion on an approach to allow it to be developed?
Yes.
And not have to pay that fee, right?
Yeah, you, immediately, immediately, every year. I'm not gonna issue you.
And just bail me out anytime, all right?
And then have to sell for.
Somebody's more happy to have to pay that fee and would keep a lot of people who have a good idea for that property from possibly buying it because it, because they would, they would, they would have to absorb that fee. Right. I guess my question is, is what's the flexibility to not have to pay that full fee? I mean, I'm not comparing apples to apples, but um, the county has own certain pieces of property that had some fees tied to it. So it's not, it's not the same thing. So we waived that in the case of, so this, this might not be the same thing, but that would be sort of my question is, is it, is it um, mandatory for you to pass on that two hundred and fifteen thousand to whoever would buy that property? Would you have to or you could wait? I mean, you'd lose that money. I mean, so, you know, it might not be, might not be a smart business decision for you, but if somebody had a great idea, it could be part of, put something there, but they were scared off by the two fifteen, then you'd work that into an negotiation.
You've already lost that money for ten years.
Well, yeah, I mean, but yeah, so, but that's a good turn of decision you all have made here and not sell it, so.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not buying my property.
There you go.
We'll make me.
We'll tip into this, give Amy something to do. It's not that much dissimilar from a system development fee, right? It's essentially like underlying value of the impact fee in the land and if you're gonna use it, someone needs to pay it because the money arguably went to the development of the underlying infrastructure.
But there is no underlying.
But the, the problem is, the block is this. This is like a rectangular island out in the middle of the Everglades and we have a nut. And you explained it actually correctly. It's not just when it was developed, which was like planning it financially. It's the ongoing nut and the infrastructure and the CIP moving forward. We're looking at seven million bucks in infrastructure repair over the next five years, right? You're right. Somebody has to pay for them. There are buyers that are willing to pay to be going right for this, right? Okay? That being said, it's how it was sold or wasn't sold.
I understand.
But you're right.
I understand.
It's a nut and neither you pay for it or they do.
And right now, from a cash flow standpoint, arguably, you guys are all collectively carrying the nut for what's sitting.
Exactly.
And because there is an assessment methodology.
Right.
And once it's sold.
Can be determined later.
Right. Once it's sold, there's an income, but the income is gonna be a wash. Dude, that's just for infrastructure services. It's not a moneymaker. It's not like the waste treatment plant's a casino.
You guys, you guys are the government business essentially.
Exactly.
Keep up the good work. Thank you very much.
Is that really a bonus in a town?
What else? Anything else for me? Well, you always know how to reach me and we've got um, your homework assignments to take back with us. There's a few things in the works that we're still doing around here and I'll keep you all posted and um, keep you posted as well. All right?
Okay, uh, you had Chief Caleb was asked also, but primarily to discuss about the village.
Right.
Which was.
We were.
So do uh, do you have any questions?
Does anybody have any questions for the chief?
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Nobody's got any questions for the chief?
Thank you.
You got anything for us?
Very torturous.
I mean, I'll follow up to you with our chief, you know, we, there's a few more. Be pretty good with the Clark County MSW program, but I'll go to that chief and he's. Committed to leading the same level of service here.
Minutes?
Okay, next, um, I guess we got any questions on uh, meeting minutes from the last meeting?
I, I have one, just one comment. When you're, when the speakers are speaking, if they're across the room, I cannot hear them.
Yes. I've been trying to get them to cut stuff off and so if we could, if somebody tries to speak from the rear, we could ask them to stand up like that.
Yeah, yeah.
He's got a speaker right there, so if they get within six feet of that, might, they should be picked up. Any corrections or changes to the minutes?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, um, I don't know if I, I actually thank a community member here, Bob Garbo, for contacting the mosquito people and bringing, being instrumental in them coming here for that presentation.
Number five says, just thank them.
I'd say, but I think Bob Garbo, I just believe one of them actually acknowledged us as a community member doing something for us.
Okay, how about if we just add, say Supervisor Holloway thanked the mosquito control for their presentation and uh, Bob Garbo for suggesting it? G A R B O?
G A R B O.
And then number eleven, I think it's just grammar. I think it's methodology, ERC methodology. M P H O D O L O G Y. I believe that's the correct spelling, methodology. Just, just grammar. Well, number eleven.
Yeah, I'm in the motion. I'm looking for the word methodology. Uh, it's in the motion, right?
Yes.
What, what line number? I'm.
Eleven, it's right in the middle of it.
Five, just combined five.
Three, four, oh, method, okay, yeah, there should be a G, uh, a G, a G Y.
A G Y.
Yeah. Okay. Any other changes or corrections?
Mr. Chairman, may the board just have it. Suggested changes online, so between one oh three and one oh six, it's a eleven. Uh, line one oh three, it says the sealed transcript will be submitted to the court. It's submitted to the district manager of Scottsdale.
Yes. I didn't pick it up on that.
No problem. And then line one oh five, uh, you can add the end of, and to continue settlement discussions. Cause the attorney recommended the board not accept the current offer on the table and to continue settlement discussions. And that would also show.
I was gonna say that would be a one oh six also.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay.
Is that it for adjustment time? I move we approve the amended.
I second.
Right. On favor?
Aye.
Okay, you're gonna handle the budget?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, this is a budget public hearing and you have a copy of the budget. The budget is balanced. It was candidly approved in May. Uh, the general fund, uh, we did increase it. I, it's still goes into Ms. O'Connell or Ms. Holloway's suggestion of ten thousand dollars uh, for mosquito chemicals. And uh, also to uh, to balance it, we decreased uh, stormwater drainage. Uh, but it, uh, it is balanced and that's on page twenty-two.
You increased the chemical?
Increase, increased the chemical by ten thousand and decreased the water drainage, uh, the stormwater drainage. That's all on page twenty-two. In the water sewer fund, we did reduce the assessments across the board by eighteen percent, uh, which was triggered off of a full ERC being reduced by three hundred dollars. And then it was proportionately all the way down. Uh, there was no decrease in the general fund, just in the water sewer fund. Uh, the balance, uh, the budget, uh, we put three hundred thousand in reserves. And then you have two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, three twenty-four for capital deeds in the fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Uh, the worksheets that are included, uh, include that and any changes we make, we'll report them on that. And uh, when you adopt the budget, if there's any changes you suggest. You can amend the budget later on, uh, but you just can't increase the assessments and put it on the tax roll. Uh, with that, uh, we will open the public hearing for comments on this topic. Is there any comments?
I have one question, probably a comment. Can you just define uh, the definition of your reserves, water and sewer system?
Yeah, that's a good.
Okay, right now, they just go into your fund balance. You haven't designated anything uh, in reserves, uh, any designated reserves. But we will, at some point in time, whenever you decide to start designating, uh, the money will be there. And you'll, if he's designated for, say, water plant improvements or wastewater plant improvements, then we'll create a line item and start budgeting towards that. But at this point, you haven't had any money, so in the water sewer fund, so it just hasn't been designated. Okay?
Yes and, yes and no.
This is for the public right now. If there's no comments or questions from the public, we'll close the public hearing. Uh, so we, uh, we opened it at uh, ten twenty-eight. And we're gonna close it at ten twenty-nine. Uh, are you okay with that not being a motion or do you feel we should have it?
I think it's appropriate to have his motion.
Okay, so we need a motion to open the public hearing. So, uh, Mr. Kish and Mr. LaShire?
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, and are there any comments? Okay, then we'll close it at twenty, ten twenty-nine. We need a.
Okay, I'll second.
Who is that? Right?
On favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, now the budget is the board's and uh, any questions, any comments, any changes? Uh, the changes that I've mentioned are in that budget and uh, actually, we're working off the one that was approved then in May, at your maiden. And what we'll do now is incorporate the changes that I've just mentioned and any other changes that you might have.
I have three things. What would you tell the ID, uh, of the reductions in tax bills, non-advalorem for next year?
Okay, that would depend on the uh, type of property they have. But on page twenty of your packet, which is of the budget, you'll see that underwater sewer, uh, what the reductions are. Uh, from uh, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. For example, a hotel room went from a thousand twenty-two to eight hundred and forty-two dollars. A single family home, which is a full ERC, went from one thousand seven oh three to one thousand four oh three. And then, you know, a condo unit went from one thousand three sixty-two to one thousand one hundred and twenty-two. Uh, like I say, it's a, it's an eighteen percent reduction on all properties, uh, including uh, boat slips and anything else.
So basically, to keep it simple, your taxes are gonna go down, non-advalorem, the part for the C I D, eighteen percent with twenty twenty-two. Which is gonna amount to about two hundred and fifty dollars per condo and about three hundred dollars per single family home. And on hotel rooms, boat slips proportionally. Okay? So you're getting a reduction now that the water plant has been paid off, which brings up the next question. I, I'm just trying to fast forward this for us and I'm being a little bit lazy. There's, what's in reserves now, okay? Is there anything reserved?
Uh, there is some. The general fund you have quite a bit of, yeah, you have almost nine hundred thousand. The water sewer funds, uh, you have in cash of three hundred thousand, okay? But you need money to get through the rest of the year, but you have money coming in, so we really won't know till the end of September. Right, September financial presented in October of how much reserves you have carried over. So uh, whatever you don't spend in the budget will reflect it in the fund balance.
Lastly, um, was the uh, fire apparatus, pumps and generator funded for replacement in twenty twenty-two?
No, not at all. No, we just, we, we put money aside for C I P and that can be used for, so that's a decision the board would make through the year when the engineer and Mitch get together and they come in with a project that they'll have to get out. And uh, and then you'll be presented with that. Is that all we have? Yes?
Yes.
Can, can I just clarify one statement? When uh, let's say we have three hundred thousand right now and yes, there's future for the remaining of the year, there's future revenue and, you know, additional expenses. But the revenue will not increase as it has been because the ad valorems have been paid. The only revenue coming in is from the utility bills. So the revenue will really drop, but your expenses will look like they've gone up.
That's right.
Hope I was clear.
Should be consistent. But the difference will be much greater than what it had been. I'm the negative.
So I expect it to go down?
Yes.
All right.
I have a question, um, from the last meeting when we have to do the stormwater management needs analysis. Is that, are we already doing that or do we need to have that in the budget somewhere?
We, we actually have a head start on that because we have looked at the capital improvement program and so forth. The other component that needs to be built into it is they ask for some population projections and so forth, and that will need to be worked in also. But we've got a head start on that even because uh, with your South Florida Water Management District permit, we had to do some projections and so forth. They'll need to be updated a little bit, but uh, we, we do have a start on that.
Yeah, what I heard also was that, so I guess DEP is gonna be publishing some guidelines for that next few months. Well, that'll help.
Yes.
Yeah.
Hello, glad.
But uh, we have money in the engineer's budget and uh, so it, we really weren't able to, but we got it. We thought about it and uh, you know, there is gonna be an expense. So uh, but you've got, I think like what you just said, David, a good start on that. That's how it should be, three or four. And uh, you got a good start on it because your C I P plan covers what your stormwater needs are. And uh, you also, you've got Chris doing a monthly report, so he's inspecting that stormwater system and keeping that up. And it's just a matter of putting it into a document, which uh, you know, I, I think we, we definitely got enough money, but.
But we took off the five thousand from the stormwater drainage. Is that a?
That's for repairs. I don't, I don't think so.
And that's hence the beauty of the C I P report. Knowing where we stand, that's the beauty of, when these things come up, we're already ready.
Yeah, it really was a very good report. It's probably the best C I P report of any of my communities ever.
Without it running wild.
Okay, um, any other questions? Then you've got uh, resolution twenty twenty-one oh four, which is adopting the budget and it would be the budget that we proposed that should be the amended budget. Okay.
I'll second. On favor?
Aye.
Okay, now you gotta pay for that budget. So you've got resolution twenty twenty-one oh five and that's approving the assessment levy, which as I said, is an overall uh, eighteen success decrease. And that authorizes us to uh, prepare a tax roll.
Do you want to open up the public hearing on consideration?
I thought the public hearing covered both.
Okay, yeah, okay.
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 I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and that's it, huh?
That's it.
All right, Lance, we're gonna stick Lance escaping over.
Okay, so clearly nothing is going on. Uh, they shut down the water spring system. We all got the same report. Um, they've started the center median. And right now they're working across the street. Sam just saw them. They're picking up the stuff in front of, on Case Drive, on the entrance. Um, they haven't been able to hit the weak well field road yet, uh, hopefully in two weeks. And they have been able to mow forty-one because of that. And they did replant the agai, so that's it.
There, there was a few things in Chris's report for Robert.
Yeah, yeah, that, yeah, the Canary home and uh, I'm sure I'll just take care of that.
Yeah.
What was the other one?
Uh, I forgot what it was, but I, I have to look. I highlighted it, but.
Okay.
Uh, Robert's on the distribution list.
Right.
I noticed he usually picks up on those things.
He's planning on texting me, so besides the Canary, can you, can you remind me what it was?
Yeah. We'll get to that, I will.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Okay, what about Mitch? Mitch?
Uh, Elena's here.
Oh, okay.
Hello, I'm Elena from Forest Utility Solutions. Um, I know you guys have a copy. I'm sending a quote as in the update for this month. Uh, a couple of things I just wanted to go over. You'll see there under the water treatment plant that we're working with the FCI, like getting that picked up. They're replacing that pick there. Uh, the wastewater plant is producing uh, several effluent. One of the things regarding both of those facilities is the security cameras, which I think has been uh, in some discussion. Those uh, need replacing. They're extremely old and outdated and not working. Um, that's been the case since we took over this facility.
Sounds right.
Uh, so we have installed after trying to repair those multiple times, we did install cheaper versions that are not controllable. That is something that we have never built for. That was just something that we did on our own. Um, but I do have a quote here for new cameras for you guys. So that's there for you to review. I also have some spec sheets as well that go along with it if you guys want to pass around the spec sheet on the products that they're proposing. They are, they're proposing. Yeah, they're just one of the spec sheets.
I'll leave that after the record.
Yeah, I can email it to you.
Oh, okay, that's fine. When I asked that we replaced the cameras, um, but I said, I put something in there about uh, like a webcam. So is that expensive to allow the community to be able to look at that webcam or?
Okay, so that's actually mentioned in here. However, for security reasons, that's not something that we are, we can do because of cyber attacks and just terrorism.
Yeah, Mitch and I talked about it and it would be somewhat of a security breach for somebody to know what's going on inside those facilities and perhaps use that information if they could gain access or access it through the webs, web.
I wasn't talking about the inside. I was talking about.
I was talking about the outside.
I think, yeah, I think it's the same concept, I think.
It would probably show some weak points in the, in the system if they existed.
Okay, because it's drinking water supply.
And that's been a big deal, I'm sure you know, since the, so happened in Oldsmar. We've had to produce some documentation about cyber security and things like that.
So then who's, you guys are monitoring these cameras then?
Yes, our operators that are there. And you'll see in there, it does mention that it was Dash from her camera, but that's not the case. These were not functioning well for Irma. Um, and they did, they do recommend an additional camera in all the map. There's a map on the back that shows you where to do the cameras in position.
Yeah, I would suggest that that map, so it's exempt confidential from exposure to the public, so.
Sign the website.
It shouldn't be.
It's every one of his, uh, members of the computer, not the camera.
No, I'm talking about the camera.
Okay, okay.
Because that, that, that's closed security, she has secondhand policies. So I would suggest that the board members hand that back in after.
I say do it. I'm a big fan of this, so I will, that's my vote. We, uh, you can't best for drinking water security in this day and age, cannot. Some L S Ds are amazing things.
Was there any consideration? Maybe, maybe one in the back here?
Yeah, the back. We have a question in a second, then we can discuss.
I'll make a motion.
So you already do support it? Okay. Discussion.
The, the cameras, well, number four, for instance, will it be able to pick up behind where the two storage tanks are at this point?
I don't know, but I doubt it. I just based on, you know, what I'm looking at here. So I don't know if you guys want to move one of those cameras, uh, you know, have you tried out moving it?
Yeah, you gotta see the back.
Or if you want.
Yeah.
It's sixteen channels, so I assume we could add up sixteen cameras.
Another camera.
I would say too, if we decide later, we got supply spots, we could add more later too.
And we should.
Doesn't break the balance.
Can't be that much.
Yeah, you're just approving it, right? That motion is to approve the, this proposal plus a cam.
Yeah. This, this, this back testing, yeah, you're right. Yeah, you got a coverage back there.
Can't see anything coming through the woods there, you know.
That's the way to come.
Yeah, it's a chain link fence. Is there lighting back there?
No.
I don't know. No, cameras not good without light.
Yes.
Look at lighting from back there.
You know, maybe mounting it on a pole back there between the two tanks would give you coverage both ways with the camera being able to move a little bit.
Yeah.
Look with some LED, LED lights. Might as well get into the nineteenth century at least.
Light it up.
We should light it up.
Okay, so, uh, the proposal then, make sure that I've got it right from the maker and the securer, is to approve this proposal with the addition of a, another camera and LED lights being installed, uh, along that. Yeah.
But did we say only one camera or we saying two?
Whatever it takes.
Whatever it takes.
Uh, add one or two.
Yeah.
Do we need to put a limit on this? I mean, where, what, like five, so.
Yeah, well, uh, you wanna say not to exceed twenty thousand dollars? And I mean, if, if, that's just saying, you know, if.
Let's not do a dollar amount, let's just do an equipment amount. But I mean, I'm sure Mitch will be frugal with it. But listen, it's one area, that back area, it's gotta be lit like daylight. It's got, it's gotta have good cameras.
Right now this proposal doesn't have any lighting in it.
Right.
So that, I don't want to consider.
I don't want for a dollar amount, just see what's gonna come back with the dollar. That for the light, that's all. You can go to inland.
You're gonna get into some expense, some LED lighting, we get running a lot, but hold on.
Well, let's see.
Well, if, I was thinking of security.
Yeah, with the existing, with the existing. You guys have existing poles out there right now. There, there's just area lights per se, but when we switch to LED, you might be able to add some floodlights.
Right.
Different directions also.
How much, what are, what about, uh, sensor LED floodlights that are solar? You know, those don't cost that much, so it's not much. And then they just go off sensor and, you know, if a deer comes by or something, it'll light up or, but they could be solar too. So we don't have to be running, paying an electrician to run.
I don't think they're gonna give you enough water, it's gonna say that they're not. Three thousand movements. Now, you have to put panels up there.
On your, on your existing ones, it's not gonna be a problem. It's just those ones in the back where we don't have any lighting that we're gonna probably have to look at something. But again, if you put a camera back there, well, the cameras are wireless, aren't they?
I believe so.
And the other thing you have to worry about is, um, which, um, bring it. Relationship to the sun, et cetera.
Right.
You know, how low they can charge, right?
So, um, the north, the north and eastern quadrants would have to be illuminated, especially that north corner going looking down Union Road, the dirt road, north of the building, because that's the easiest way to get into. And it's the path of least resistance.
So are we moving forward with this or are we?
Yeah, no. Do you want to bring it back or do you wanna just have it?
I'd say green light.
I think, you know, I think just, you know.
If this motion is approved, then we'll see.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? Do you want the lighting so the cameras can see? Don't most cameras see whether it's daylight or night?
No.
Well, a lot of my friends have the cameras that track wildlife in their yards. And if it's at night, panthers and everything, it comes out as clear as day and they don't have lights.
But they don't run long enough. They're just a real short clip, like eight seconds, ten seconds.
Well, I, I see the whole thing from when it enters the area and leaves the area. I think there's cameras that do that.
Yes.
I mean, even on your phones, it, I could take a picture at night and it looks like I took it in the daylight.
My one question is, do we want to split this into two and just go ahead and approve the cameras? And then have them give us another, uh, idea of what it's gonna cost for the lighting back there?
Also see Terry's right on the cameras.
You'll see if it works.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, so the motion is to, uh, it's, uh, approve the proposal for the cameras with the addition of one or two more cameras.
Right.
Yes.
Yes.
Second it?
Yeah, it's been moved and seconded.
On proof?
Aye.
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 And then Mitch is gonna bring a lighting proposal next meeting.
Right.
Okay, um, as far as the security jobs go, most has all been done except for about eighty-eight that are all larger meters. Um, larger sized ones that aren't necessarily residential or for some of the bigger, um, facilities here. So those are coming, we had to stop because of the billing cycle. So as soon as we're done with this billing cycle, we'll get the rest of those meters in and the community should be complete as far as the meter change out. We currently have a guy going around right now to replace any backflow handles that have rusted out and broken, things like that. So that is happening. And, um, with the new meters, we're able to read all of the meters in the community in about, in less than an hour with a hundred percent accuracy. So you should see a large improvement there across the board, just with accuracy and things like that.
Uh, Terry, also, you'd ask for a report. Uh, there's about eighty meters that are going to cover the entire billing cycle. The rest of them partial. So, uh, Mitch and Elena are going to put together a comparison on those eighty meters from this billing cycle, but the readings aren't in yet, so that's why we don't have it now.
Okay.
And they compared the same billing cycle on those meters last year.
Yeah, and I want the board to know there's eighty left to do, but I already have a new meter, so I wasn't last.
Large.
Yeah, the large one's the one you need. Can I ask you one question? In Orange and Cove, when I, I noticed when I walked the dogs around, there are a bunch of the backflow handles that are really bad. They're really rusty and terrible over in the, in Orange and Cove.
Okay.
So if we could just focus on that.
Okay, sure. I know that's what they're going around with right now.
Yeah. So that has.
Sure. Um, and then lastly, the, you guys are, I just want to make sure that you are storm ready. This storm doesn't look like it's gonna be a big deal, but the generator has been tested, it's gassed, that everything's good as far as this community goes. She's learning a lot of her needs, um, today and it has been brought, so we just make sure all our facilities are in a good place. This one doesn't look like it'll be a big deal, but just so you know. Also, we do report storm tracker, whether that or not, it's something for the D E P. It's a way for us to communicate with them, um, through a storm and ask for a storm as far as what the needs are for each of our facilities. If, if it's running on a generator, if it's functioning, what lift stations are all, if we have any needs in the community as far as gas or generators or something like that. That's what we need to give it in. So we do, um, complete those reports here in Irma, those daily updates to them, just so they know where facilities at.
What does that do? That's how, that's how you've got fuel during Irma, isn't it? Storm tracker.
It may have been one of the ways.
How famous about the fuel?
My staff called all the time. I know Elena, her people did say.
Oh, because they were, somebody said, "Who was bringing it?"
Well, that.
Uh, the fire department actually was one. So what is storm tracker?
That's their, that's the theory, that is the theory behind storm tracker, is that it's a way for us to communicate to the county and state, here's our needs and that they would get it out there. Uh, Irma was just, they were overwhelmed and so a lot of it was just left up like to us as the utility company and working with the C I D and kind of wherever we could get the fuel from.
We just called where, whoever had diesel, yeah, and then Mitch would send somebody up to go get it, yeah. But, uh, Tony Davis actually with his contact with the fire department got it sent on priority list, uh, after, I don't know, three, four days.
Yeah.
So, which really does have happened to call the gas stations and try and find that source.
Uh, other than that, I just wanted to ask you guys if there's anything that you want to see on future reports that aren't currently on that report?
One of the things that Mitch said he's gonna put on that I've asked for is not just how much water is pumped, but how much is consumed so that you can get that comparison, uh, if there's any water loss. Uh, we used to get that and Ron used to prepare something where it could show how much water is actually being used that's reused and not just all from the wells. Uh, and that was some technical report Ron used to prepare. Can I be good? Yeah.
You mean that's on the irrigation water you're talking about?
Just the irrigation, but a total water.
A water, basically a water balance.
Yeah.
That would be done. We, we know how much water is produced by the wells.
Right.
Going to the water treatment facility. Then of course there's some water that's lost because of the R O process, reverting process. And then of course then that water goes out into the water distribution system. So you can track based upon the meters, how much you, you would have lost there. And then on the other side, as far as the, uh, and I don't know if Ron was preparing this, but then you could take the, the water from wastewater plant, the, the blending of it with the, uh, canal water and different sources and what's going into the irrigation system. And just take a look, that gives you handle if you've got some leaks in your water, water distribution system, your fire irrigation system. And just give me some warning.
And it is a report that, uh, simply for the engineer annually, it's, it's saying, or report that we have to do a water balance or water loss report that we submit to the D E P annually, but.
Over your track.
Yeah, with the track.
Sounds great. One, one question. See, that's my.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, and that was on, that was on here. So that's a good look for the end of this month.
Thank you.
The last week of the month is scheduled for that and prepare.
I just need to tell one people.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Engineering report, I guess. Yes, okay, the C I P's first one up and we've gone ahead based upon your comments and getting together with Mitch and going over some of the information in the graph report and we have finalized that now for you. We, we correct that there was maybe a few typos here and there. Uh, and what we did was we did update tables to reflect the time of completing some of the projects based upon priorities that Mitch had also. And then we did have, had a table that got more specific about the one year, one to five year plan. Really, the, the, probably the meat of it is, is back in the last couple of tables. And if you want to go back to table seven, it's about third page from the back. And that's where we took some of the suggestions about different projects, reprioritized them as far as when they needed to be done, whether it's one to five or five to ten and so forth. And then on table eight, we took that five-year component, the one to five years, and broke those into individual years. Uh, one, one through five, basically. The, the one big one is number fourteen, that wellfield transmission main. In order to budget over several years for it, uh, we, we did say that, okay, during years four to six, or five to six, primarily those two years, we may not be doing too many other projects. We may have to concentrate on saving some money to plead that wellfield transmission main replacement. Uh, we, we kind of looked, if you see, we're looking between three and four hundred thousand a year to spend.
Say that again, one more time.
Uh, uh, three to, uh, four hundred thousand a year.
A year.
Yes.
That's what I want.
Yes. And hopefully we'll have some reserves built up that maybe some of these projects come in less, that cover some of the projects may come in more. It, it's just a balancing act a little bit.
Oh, this other fourteen on table seven, that's the transmission main, that's this.
It's this one, it's the same one. The, the number square is on.
The one from the water plant across the street.
Uh, that's down, uh, a little bit in the list here. We have included some isolation valve replacement.
But not a replacement.
Not a complete replacement of the main.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah. And, and again, this is dynamic. Every year we should take a quick look at it, do some updates, see where we're at. Uh, there may be some projects that push from the five, ten-year plan into the one to five. Same thing may happen. We may have some projects that drop out.
Was there? Was there ever any more discussion? I get the whole thing. Was there ever any more discussion about the efficiency and the practicality of this other pumping station along the canal that, um, Ron had talked about three or four years ago?
Developing.
Name for it, but there's pipes that go into the ground, the water seeps in from the canal and kind of gets filtered through the ground and collected there. There's a small pump house and it gets shot over to the.
Yeah, I think that concept was a horizontal well system.
Right.
And, uh, basically on that fifty acres, forty, eight acres. And, uh, that would be a replacement for the wellfield that you've got currently or supplement to it.
At the time, the reason I'm asking the question, and I don't know if he liked it, at the time, it was about two hundred and fifty thousand compared to a million to replace the main. So that's seven hundred and fifty, right? Now, if we did that, we would have to make that land back there a, uh, a water district and nothing could be built on it, as I understand. It could be park area.
It could be, it could be park.
So then nothing could be built on it. That's a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar consideration.
Yeah, he, he, there may be some other uses that we could have for that property, but again, we'd have to really look into it. Talk to the hydrogeologic folks to see what other uses could be feasible there that we wouldn't risk, run the risk of doing any kind of groundwater pollution or any kind of interconnectivity that would be harmful.
Let me ask one other question. And nobody knows if this is even gonna happen. It's, but let's say there's a new sign. Let's say their Sunstream is saying that there's a hundred and fifty unit potential. And yet my understanding is they only have thirty or something E R Cs. Um, but let's say that they found the E R Cs that they could do. Are the three existing wells that we have capable of handling ultimately a hundred and fifty new units there, three hundred units in the back without drilling new wells?
Without going into detail right now?
Off the top of.
Off, I would say yes. Yes.
And, and that's why they did the original analysis. The assessment methodology is based on the availability of utilities for a hundred and thirty-two E R Cs.
Right.
And so as long as E R Cs are available, you can't create them. You only have a hundred and thirty-two.
Now, what do you mean? The, you can't create.
No, I know what you mean, but what do you mean?
It's my, I'm assuming, I assume that Sunstream is sitting on a hundred and fifty, no, less E R Cs because it would be conduct. Let's say a hundred. would be condo, let's say 100. Are they, do they own those?
No, they own 33 if I.
Okay, I think you're right.
And then back here, when Seaman was going in, it was 300 at point four, so it was like, what, 120? It was what they were gonna use.
And how many total available?
32? Two, no, two.
Oh, 260, yes. So that's maxing it up, right?
266 would max it up.
Why I'm asking is that, is that 150 like an assumption? They gotta buy the ERC.
Sure.
They don't have.
Right, they have to, they would have to get a letter of availability from the district. Now, just like any potential developer, when they buy vacant land, they submit plans to us, to us, David goes through it, and there's a, 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 a chapter in the state statutes that says how you figure this out. He uses that and determines how many ERCs is required for that development, and that might or might not require them to buy more.
Yes.
And then the board would make the determination if they're going to accept that plan.
But there has to be ERCs at the site.
Yeah, yeah, right now the, the CID owns some ERCs.
Right.
They're, they're unused. Plus you've got some properties out there that may have excess ERCs, but they plan to use, those ERCs could be that interruption, bought by the other parties and so forth transferred, there is that ability.
Potential of 150. Yeah, so potentials, like you can advertise anything. Do you know what the ERCs on that five acres is right now? Not to bring up.
Oh, the, the, how many they do sit on right now?
On, just for that.
Right now they own 33.
I think that.
That's just not designated to that five acres. That's just what they own.
That, well, actually they own it and are paying on that for that acreage.
Yeah, they are.
For 33, although to, to achieve what they want, they're gonna require quite a few more.
That was my question.
Okay. Now, they, the South Hotel or Sunstream has more ERCs, it's just the undesignated is the 33.
The undeveloped.
Right, that's what I'm getting at, because I mean, they need the certain amount to run the.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
That's outside of the 33 that's vacant. And the motel units are all individually, oh, yes, that's, some R, some R.
Okay.
It's okay.
I got it.
Yeah. So that could be, my problem is, I don't know them, but they're advertising 150 potentially, how the hell can they sell that to some unsuspecting person who doesn't do due diligence?
That person would have to do some diligence.
Yeah.
And, you know, they would then go to us, we'd go to the engineer, and we determine what they're, I, the most recent analysis, and it's based on plans that was submitted, was from Scott Preppan, and when they wanted to expand, they set their proposal, Ron reviewed it, and then he came back and he said you need X number of, of ERCs. Did he find more?
Scott? No, I don't think he's.
But, but for the expansion, the plans that he submitted, he needed more than what he had.
Yes.
But he did the expansion, right? No, oh, he didn't. Oh, I thought they added to the, to the peers.
That they just reconfigured.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, same.
I see. All right, that's what I wanted to know, because that just didn't, I'm saying, where the hell are they getting that?
Yeah, they do have the potential of being able to develop those number of lots based upon some previous, on the current zoning that's there, plus there is a, a site development plan approval from the county already that would give them that ability to build that out if they decided to, once they got the ERCs from you.
Let me ask one other question. The dormitory lift, did they ever buy, there was a lot of discussion, he was gonna buy some more ERCs, but I don't remember him buying.
No.
So how many ERCs? There's another wild card, that's what, six acres?
Uh, yeah.
And it's not the acreage.
Right. No, no, I think that's. All right, all right, let's get back to this report, because we'll, yeah, we're gonna be talking about that kind of stuff later, so.
Yeah, okay.
Let's get back to what we're doing here, to finish this up before we get.
So if you guys, I don't know if you guys want to review this and put it on the next agenda, or if you want to add it and approve it.
We should do it at the next.
At some point in time, we do need to accept it as the CIP for the district.
And I'll transmit a copy of this electronically to Cal and then he can distribute it.
That'd be great.
Yeah, we're all doing anything. Okay, but then we're gonna have, we'll have knowledge of the amount of money that we have to spend for each project, that we determine the order, basically, that's it.
Yeah, each project will come to you individually for consideration.
Yes.
And then you'll probably say, do we have enough money? We point you to the money to be able to do that project.
Okay, so this really locks nothing but storm.
No, right.
So why are we waiting? This is just a guideline.
It's a guide.
So why not?
Why not accept it?
Motion to accept.
Sure, okay.
Propose.
I'll say.
On favor?
Was that Mr. Johnson? It's a nice report.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you. No sense in waiting.
Yeah, I agree.
So you got it, you got it all in favor?
Yeah.
Yes, and Cal, will you get me a copy of that? Email it?
Electronic, okay?
Yes, be fine, thank you.
I should be able to send it to Cal either later today or over the weekend.
I'm still on vacation, so yeah, over the weekend.
Okay, good. The, the next item's new home construction drainage sidewalk damage. Some, some of the houses that they've been finishing up are going ahead and doing the sidewalk repairs. I, I need to get over, take a look at a few of them as far as drainage and so forth. Some of the houses that are under construction right now, again, ongoing issues with the silt coming off, getting into the street, in the gutters and so forth. You know, the big concern is we get a whole bunch of rains this weekend, we're gonna see some of that maybe flush a little bit further down in the drainage system. So where I can, I'm gonna try to get in touch with someone, but it's kind of late in the game this week to try to head off tropical storm Fred.
Okay, uh, if you look at Chris's report, there's a lot of concrete that was damaged, and then there, in one of the gutter pans, there is silt in it, and that's by the developer, so, you know, and then also the.
They need to clean that up.
They need to clean that up.
Yes, yes.
That's another thing, Chris is doing a really good job. He really is, I mean, he's, he's putting eyes on everything.
Yeah, I, I got tapped, a lot of things to be looked at.
He's, he's.
You guys used to have a three-page maintenance list that, he sends his staff out, they take care, you probably saw a lot of things, or whole things that when he's out there, they just knock them off in the day.
Yeah, they did a nice job.
I have, I have a question on the new construction. I know when they're pretty much towards the end, they replace their sidewalks, but what about the neighboring lots, the damage they do to those sidewalks? Do we monitor them, or, I mean, it's up to the builder to fix it, or do we have to prove the builder did it?
That's a good question.
I, I, I think if we can prove that they've damaged it, then we can force them to do it. If it looks here should be old damage, then we really cannot force them to do that at that point. So it's gonna be a case-by-case basis.
And we can, when you talk to them, take the position that they did it.
Yes, yes.
Let them prove that they did.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Good, good. Yeah, I, I would think, you know, I, I know with more commercial and government-type projects, we usually require them to take pre-construction videos of not only their property but adjacent properties, just so that we know what was there before, and they know.
Okay.
If, if we're ready to move on, the next thing is to sell Marissa Drive Asphalt Repairs. We did receive bids on them, we had two bids that were responsive, the one bid did not have a bid bond that was required, but the, the responsive bids, they came in higher than we had estimated, and in reviewing things, you know, right now, the, the cost of construction is extremely high, especially those having to deal with petroleum products and so forth like that. Russ did go over, take a look at it after a storm and reported back that, you know, some of the drainage is not such, it's such dry, dry, such need right now that maybe we go ahead and postpone it, hopefully look at maybe next year getting some better pricing for this. I, yeah, I said as long as nobody, there's no hazard involved, man, I mean, there's just some problems, so, yes, I, it should be in CIP, yes, we'll budget it out. Yes, and you, you, it sounds like you do have some reserves up, Cal was mentioning you got about $900,000 in the general reserves that could be potentially used for some of that work. So at this point, my recommendation is that you reject all the bids at this point.
Yeah, it's that emotion.
I would say it only makes sense, or kind of, just while we're, we're gonna do it, it's just a matter of.
Timing. So, yeah, I, I make a, I make a motion.
My, my question to this gentleman back there is, you do realize that even if we accept that the bid that we're here today, we're looking at, but you're looking at about 25,000 to do the drainage section, when we get to that point?
Really?
Yes, sir. That's what I wanted, that's what I pointed to you, sir. Let me pull that. And they command out the business.
First of all, a quick question, could you step up here, sir? So they have, they can't hear you.
It is for the record, there's a motion.
I have such a soft voice.
Hold on.
For the record, there's a motion, but not a second yet.
How second?
Now we're in discussion.
Now you can go forward.
Thank you very much. Um, it's my understanding that you put out two alternatives, one involves some kind of a concrete thing down the hill or something or not, or which one did you finally recommend?
Well, we, we didn't make a recommendation for acceptance, but yeah, alternate number one was to do some.
Let me, let me.
Just all McCann. Well, see, yeah, the bid, yeah, it was gonna be just all the asphalt work, and then we had a second bid in there to go ahead and do some valley gutter down the center of the road and do some, do some cleanup of the catch bases, and that's where the difference on the, on, on, on the bids are as far as the difference in the cost. The, the one that was not responsible, that didn't submit a bid bond, his cost was about 25 grand.
That difference, that wouldn't help.
Yeah, so.
And if we look at the, really the most, the responsive bid, the difference there is, let's see, 20, 37,000.
So as I understand it, I'm not too bright on this stuff, you, you put out an RFP with two alternatives, one of them, if you select that one, what costs us $25,000 is your recommendation or your position.
But you have input on it?
Yeah.
We do.
Well, sure.
Okay, well, in that case, I'd like to suggest, and you're not gonna take immediate action.
Right, right.
Okay, given the, the blessing of that time, I'd like to suggest that we open some communication, we have not seen, you know, the reporter had a chance to talk with the engineer. We'd like to also take a quick look, I know there was a discussion with some of our members who actually didn't have the benefit of going to law school, that were interpreting contracts, so we'd like to take a look at, at, with, with our lawyer or your lawyer and all that, and then hopefully we can come back to an understanding about, you know, who's responsible for what, and, and if we need to pay, we'll pay, obviously, and we, we appreciate very much the consideration. I think it's time for us to get involved in the dialogue, and we'd like to do that, and we've got time now.
That's fair.
Thank you. And you got a motion to reject all bids and rebid.
Okay, but then also, I would like to say that the next bid not require the bid bond, so that smaller people can put forth a maybe a much cheaper, which would help all of us.
Right.
You know, so I thought that was a good idea.
Tony and I exchanged emails that we can't accept the bid bond at this point, too.
Can?
We, we, we don't need to have a bid bond.
It's so small.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's a loss to rebid, it's not on the grid, that's typically a bid bond that plunged.
Clarification, what, what, I, I thought you guys were paying for everything, but so you're getting half.
No.
According, according, yeah, according to the.
Agreement, yeah.
Yeah, we understand that according to the document that was signed years ago, they're responsible for drainage, we're responsible for the cap.
Yeah.
Drainage is his, so that's why we asked.
And told you, you didn't think it was fair, and I thought you guys weighed that.
He didn't say, I didn't think he thought it was fair, I think he thought that that was not the agreement, and I believe Tony took a look at it while he was there and said, no, that is the agreement. What, so that's why we asked for the two bids. And I went back to 2014, but he searched it out, and that is the deal, they're responsible for the drainage.
Right.
What, what about making some kind of subcommittee?
Guys, that's probably.
Yeah, that's.
We'd like to work with you.
Yeah.
But you're good, yeah, we appreciate the response of this body to that need, and, and so don't misinterpret that, but we would like to, I'd like to see the agreement, I'd like to talk to the engineer and have some of our folks involved, but we wanna work with you, and we thank you.
So you have a question, just one.
So how would we do, how would we develop a subcommittee involving communities?
Just, we can only have one board member, so one of the board members, I might care to participate, and then Tony and, and David and myself will meet with, and that board member will meet with their group and will put something together.
Well, I think it's worth it for a $100,000 project that we do something.
Sure, oh, sure.
Can you, I think you already gave me your email card last time.
Okay.
I'll volunteer.
Okay, I've got one right here, but I'll.
I got that impression.
So you do have a motion to reject all bids.
Yeah.
And when we rebid, there would be no bond, no bid bond required.
Right.
Okay, so we got all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, and then we will have a, a staff and supervisor, la sure committee.
No, 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 a board member liaison working the staff.
That's what I said.
Not a committee.
Oh, okay, all right. A board member working the staff to meet with them, okay.
So we're saying, I mean, just. You're making sure.
The next issue is one that David looked at, we've got a copy, and that was your request, or your question, Russ.
Yeah, maximum height, in reviewing the various documents and so forth, I'm not finding there being, what a maximum height that you, you can build up to, that, everything's more minimum to meet that flood elevation and so forth. You know, the, when you start getting into the building code, depending on what you wanna build, then there could be some height restrictions. Typically, in a single-family area, you're looking at a maximum building height of 35 feet total.
I'm not worried about building height, I'm worried that lot, it doesn't affect me, but it affects the neighbors, their drainage, their view, when that house is, that lot is at least five feet long.
Oh, you're talking about the one on Wildwood's.
Yes, yeah, that thing is.
It's way up there.
That's huge.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's what I'm, is he saying? They had, for compaction on that, they, they put in some stakes, they're gonna let that settle for 30 days, and then, and then after that, they're gonna remove a bunch of that. That is not, they're not gonna build on top of that.
So they're doing, they're doing some soil surcharging.
Correct.
Surcharging, what? Soil surcharging to induce that settlement to occur sooner than later.
Right, just the way to the.
Just the way to the soil, pushing it down.
Five feet worth of.
It's way up there. Good, that's good, that may alleviate some of those, it hurts.
All right, thanks, just didn't think it was fair for the nature.
Yeah, and, and getting back to the issue about drainage, they still need to maintain their drainage one way or the other, and that's, that plays into it also as far as how, how they get that, the finished floor, especially if they bring it, don't wanna build stem wall.
Right.
Yeah. Any other questions, issues on the engineering?
Okay, and go, manager report. You've got a copy of the financial report, we have received all payments for your, you know, there's little, or that's reflected, but that's just in, who paid early and who but that's just in, who paid early and who hasn't paid early. And, uh, so that never comes out exactly, but your numbers are reflected. I just checked, uh, communication from the county and, and, yeah, some more coming. Uh, other than that, uh, you know, your financials are good and, uh, I'll answer questions. Carrie had one question, she sent it to us, and that's been, that had, Jen had bought that before you.
Hey, it's.
It's our big present.
Yeah, but, uh, Cal?
Yeah.
Uh, when I went to put everything together, I find that the same thing happened in June, so you need to fix June also.
Uh, okay.
Is that on page seven, the 5,000 for the lighting?
Yeah, utility general.
Yeah.
Between the water and sewer and general fund, the amount paid was right, but the amount distributed to each fund was reversed.
I have a question on that whole line item, if I remember, and I don't have it in front of me. The, what was the proposed for the year and the, and, and budget? I think there's like 11 or 12,000 difference in lighting between what we thought it was going to be and what it's going to end up being? Does that, does that ring a bell? Carrie, you can then.
Uh, let me, I'm looking at that, hang on.
Yeah, just right across on page seven, just follow that line, I come over.
On page seven?
I believe that's where it was all. That's where the difference, there's the June and July has $5,000 for lighting.
Oh, in the, uh, trend report.
Yeah.
All right, so you want the utility, hang on.
We have that in here.
Is that what you elected?
Yes.
Uh, utility operations?
Well, to date, we would have spent 52,000 out of a $76,000 budget. So then if we have two more months, they project 6,000 a month, we're still gonna make budget, we're gonna be okay. Because with that correction, we've spent, let's see, yeah, 52,800. And you have two more months left, which is about 12,000. So that would make it 64, and our budget 76,000.
Are you worried about the first person? Hold on.
I think what you're looking at, Sam, is the general fund where the higher amount was posted. So yes, that would give the appearance we were gonna be over budget.
Yeah, okay, yes, thank you.
But I use the actual numbers. Now, on, um, the general fund, we've spent 20,000 to date with the correction, and our budget is only 19,000. So yes, in that case, we're probably gonna be 4,000 to 5,000 over budget. But I think it's hard to predict utility rates.
Right. Yeah, that was my question.
Okay. Other than that, they look good.
Moving to a strategy. It would be easy.
Yeah, I have a motion to accept the financials for June and July as presented.
Aye, it's second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, to save money, we advertise all your meetings at, uh, one time, that we don't have to advertise them, uh, every month. And, uh, you had discussed moving it back to the third Friday as opposed to the second Friday. Uh, that gives us a little more time to get your financials in, uh, in advance. So if that's, you can still keep it the second Friday or, you know, the third Friday.
I like the second Friday. For some reason, earlier in the month works better for me.
I like it, too, actually. That's where it goes, along with what it goes, boys meeting. I don't know that one. Like it, too. I understand your point. I was gonna look at 2022 to see how many of our meetings come before the 10th or on the 10th. I didn't have a chance to do one. But there's none before the 10th.
Well, actually, no, that, what you're looking at is the third. Uh, I could.
You're looking at the third Friday.
October.
No, but we're saying now. October, December, April.
Yeah, April's the only one that's gonna be in the second digits.
You're looking at that resolution in front of you that you're looking at, Sam, is the third.
Right, I take seven days off at.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, October's gonna be an early one.
October will be the, so, the 11th, so will March.
If we leave it on the second, the second Friday in the month, it's not gonna be. Well, six of them might be late, that's the 10th or earlier.
Yeah, what, what I've experienced in my lifetime is you usually leave your books open till the 10th.
Right.
And then you produce your financial statement. So it isn't if you have a meeting on the 10th, your financials will be accurate and prepared. You have to allow time for that to happen. And that's why the third Friday has always worked out. But that's my opinion.
So, yeah, so then, you like the third Friday better, Derek?
I like the third Friday. It's, it's only fair to the management company.
Yeah.
Well, that works fine. I, I, I'm sure if you try to block out Fridays.
Now, I see, it's kept also, let's, let's, let's move it then.
Thank you. I moved with dot resolution 2021-06.
All right. And that is the one that's in your book, that's the third.
Right, that's the third.
It's correct.
The third Friday. I second that.
Uh, it, it was seconded by Mr. Jensen.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, next would be a discussion on ERCs and, uh.
I can't see that.
Yeah, but, but there is a rule, and it's 4.35. And basically, the methodology used is that, uh, a, a plan is submitted, and then the engineer goes through it and determines what the, uh, the needs for utilities are. Uh, and then the board accepts or rejects.
Yeah, we come up with what we see as the, the ERCs that are gonna be considered by that property, and as long as they're less than, lesser same as what is, what they own, then of course, they're ready to go with their development.
Right. Then, once they start the development, the county requires a letter from either, or we've been sending it, but I think the rule says the engineer, but, uh, of availability. And, uh, if there's, if they don't have the ERCs, then it's not available. And if there, if they don't have the ERCs, that could be because there's not the capacity. Now, the other portion of that is the general fund or the O and M. And there is no methodology for that. It's just what was accepted by the developer. That's never been in question because the, uh, it, it, it's a fairly low amount, it's $395 per ERC. So there's never been any questions on that. Uh, usually, what I've seen in other communities is for undeveloped land, it's one per acre unless it's planted, and then it would be one per lot or one per development.
Okay, so.
That's not a, yeah.
See, that's what we need to get to.
But, but that's not going to save people much money.
So, I don't. On the general side. It's not gonna save any money. What do you mean? I'm talking about on the utility side. That should go, because you shouldn't buy somebody's bad history.
That's all we know that's on that land is what was already approved for that property.
But if we go back to what it was before it was approved, which would have been one ERC per acre.
I, I don't know if it was that, that's never been approved by the board. But when you say in my experience, not through POI, in other communities, that's the O and M assessment methodology they use. Now, for both, not many of them have utilities. So, uh, the ones for debt is based upon, you know, the, the burden.
Well, I'm not talking about the O and M, I'm only talking about the utility.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, the board had the opportunity to change that, does it not?
They have the opportunity to change that if there's a plan submitted that the engineer reviews and says, this is what, that's what you're approving it for. If they change the use, then they have to submit another plan for the whole district.
No, you know, I think this is, I think the terms, course, must be. There are two different issues at play. One is ERC allocation.
Right.
And if you have, there are a number of ERCs that allocate each particular parcel. And that's what Cal was talking about, the 4.35, when you determine whether or not what's on there now is appropriate for the intended use.
Right.
That's when the person has to have a plan and then come and tell us, hey, please modify it based upon my actual use versus what was originally laid on it. Now, I think what the chairman's also asking about, it sounds like, is we have global approach to the overall assessment methodology. Is that true, okay?
No, no. I'm worried about vacant land.
Oh, sorry, by, sorry.
Right, I mean, 'cause nothing's happened in five years, 10 years with this property because of the way the ERCs are set up. It's, if you read that assessment, if you read the, uh, assessment that we got, that's detriment to the property. Because it's an unknown, too. It's not just that it's.
Well, but right now, there are no ERCs. You know, the law, that land, if somebody, well, we do.
But when, when somebody comes to purchase it, you tell them it's $215,000 a year you can pay for the ERCs in. Well, that's the way it's coming across.
Maybe it's taken, and Tony can clarify this, is when, when, when somebody comes in and wants to negotiate that property, you can negotiate how many ERCs are assigned to it initially, or you can do some kind of plan where, buy down a property, basically, as they develop their first phase or second phase and so forth, you can negotiate that, I believe, as far as selling those ERCs to them.
The way that was presented to Zeman Brothers, they backed out because the $215,000 a year was not clear that that's what they were gonna be paying.
They were told that the.
Well, they said.
They backed out on the.
That's what's in this assessment. That's what it says in, in the assessment that we paid for.
Yeah, but that's not.
Why Zeman's.
Why Zeman's back.
Well, it has in there why Zeman's pulled out, that's what it says.
So I think it's a, I think it's a combination of.
Wow, that's gonna be the case for anybody that tries.
But I think Terry brought that up before, which was, at the negotiation, we can say, well, the ERCs will start when we get to phase two, phase three, phase four, whatever.
But it doesn't say.
Yeah, but let me, let me, let me go back a minute here. On the papers you're looking at, Russ, I believe he withdrew because of the impact fees. That's county. County impact fees are high. It wasn't ERCs, it was impact fees, and there's a difference.
Russ, the other thing is Bruce Hollencheck bought that land for 10 million bucks. Didn't affect him, you know?
What is happening?
Well, what it means is if somebody wants.
He wants 10 million dollars, that doesn't mean anything.
Well.
No, but let's stick to what Russ is looking at right now, and let's clarify that.
Someone else could buy.
But his, his refusal letter said impact fees.
Right.
It was a combination, I think.
Yeah, combination.
But it didn't read that way.
That would not.
Impact fees are completely different, over and above assessments.
At a time, Karen. It says here that Zeman would not work with the projected cost of Cuyahoga County impact fees and CID assessments. It's the total combination.
All right, okay, I stand corrected.
So still, we have to make a change, or it's never gonna get developed, or it's gonna be a tree farm or something, so.
But how can you change? What, I mean, you, you've gotta be.
I thought that guy said we were the government.
Well, yeah, but, you know, my understanding is from Tony is that you, we can layer it in the contract so that they pay zero the first.
Defer it.
Yeah, but defer, and, and we, and it's all in completion of each phase.
So, you would, you would sell the ERCs as they needed them, since you do own them. It's a little bit different on a piece of property that.
That we don't own.
That you don't own.
Right, that already says ERC's, you know, right?
Correct, correct. And when we look at the ERCs that they utilize, they, they carry the extra ERCs that's already assigned to that property, they just go on use until they're able to dispose of them through a sale or a transfer to another piece of property they may buy.
Okay.
Russ, if truth of the matter is, okay, if the truth of the matter is, we cut Zeman's, sneak. That's the truth.
The hot subject, yeah.
It's not the subject.
Yeah, it is.
That's why they backed out.
We're talking about ERCs. I have a, I have a legal question for you then, okay? In this 435, it says each property that is providing services. Okay? By the Port of the Anne's Community Improvement District was assigned a specific number of equivalent units. I'm saying these lands aren't provided services. There's no infrastructure, there's no waste pipes, there's no irrigation pipes, there's no lines, there's no.
No, it's available.
It's not there, it doesn't say that. It says is provided, what do we gotta go into the definition of is?
We don't plant foot, we don't run utilities on their property.
We're not, in addition, for example, if it's on a roadway that's adjacent to the property.
Then it's available, that's like all our residential lots here.
Yes.
The pipes are there, everything's there, we can charge the ERC.
Yes.
There's nothing available, thank you, Karen. Well, you do have pipelines that are adjacent to it, and when they get ready to.
Yeah, they hook them up.
Right on Union Road.
The hydrants out there.
Yeah, there, there's main lines out there.
The pot water transmission lines and the.
Fire.
Those and trailer park.
Yes.
Are they on Union Road that's adjacent to the property?
Yes, so they, they are available.
Okay, so we've got, we've got a lot back in, uh, Keynes Drive and Wildwood, that big lot back there.
The water source is sitting right there on the roadway.
What are they paying?
Uh, they're paying for, I'm not sure exactly what their ERCs are.
Yeah, they don't, I don't.
Yeah, it's just the ones I'm thinking of, they don't pay. Because, because the lot is not available. Uh, they're available. They can't get utility, it's there, but they have a little lift station.
Yeah, that, that, but it's still, well, if they do that, it's still available.
It, it, if we're not assessing, frankly, uh.
We're not assessing.
We're not assessing them anything. If they come up with a way that they could ever build a, build something on that lot, would have to buy an ERC from someplace, a single family to, to hook up. Water source is right there for them if they need, if, if the one they could figure out a way to develop that lot.
Doesn't sound adequate. They pay nothing. And that these lots, it, it just, this is, this is not, that's kosher, it's just not, I mean.
That's, that's one lot in the whole community.
Well, no, I'm.
People have been paying ERCs on vacant land for years.
Oh, yeah, but they, they paid where they had, the facilities were there. I paid when I had, I had paid for six years or whatever the heck it was, because I had the water pipes there, I had the sewer lines there. You were providing service to me. And the technical, that's why I want the legal jargon from Tony, whether that blocks, blocks things up. I mean, it says that is provided, services that is provided.
Yeah, I'll talk with Dave and Cal about the specifics of that particular lot that they're talking about.
Well, no, no, I don't care about that, I'm talking in general. This line right here, each property that is providing services. If it's, so you consider, that, that's interpreted by a legal court, and it, like, somebody can't come back to us and say, prove that you're providing service.
Service is available. Yeah, service, service is available.
Available.
Doesn't say that.
Something may not be provided, it's available.
Well, in, in the case of the big parcel.
It's provided.
In the case of the big parcel, and I believe it also talks about it in your rules of policy about if there is the need for, if somebody who's developing land to add infrastructure to it, there is a process for them to get approvals to do that. That would include like your collection lines in a big 40-acre park. It may require that they have to install a wastewater compensation.
We can pay them back for that, that's what's in here, that we have them build it and we pay them back.
That's if they do, that, that's if they do a line extension or something that would benefit not only themselves but other people, reimbursable agreements. Uh, a little bit different than if, if somebody comes in there and wants to develop that 50 acres, they would have to put in the basic infrastructure based upon their plan for development to take care of it. And then when we go, and if they wanna dedicate it over to the utility, then we would do an acceptance process.
So you're telling me there's no way we can change what we're doing with these vacant properties? No way we can change the ERCs on it? Nothing, nothing's gonna change, so, because.
The only, the only way I see that you could change it is if there was a plan submitted that altered the, the, uh, proposed use that it's, that they're paying ERCs for. Those ERC are reserved for their development.
For their property.
And.
They're paying for the guarantee.
If they say, I'm gonna put a garage on 50 acres, uh, and you accept their plan, and David goes through that and determines that the sewer water uses two ERCs, and you accept that that's, that's what it is.
Well, that's, that's what would be committed to that property as far as what, what, actually, they would satisfy their availability by having TR, two ERCs on that property. But if there's 300 assigned to that property, they would still pay the, the other 298.
Somebody where along the line agreed to the gun club then on 50 acres to give them two ERCs.
Yeah.
And that was aborted by the board.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and I think that was split on, that was split out of that other bigger parcel though at one point or another.
Who sold to the gun club that property and, uh, had two ERCs?
Yes.
And Ron had done a analysis of what was needed based on, you know, the, the facilities that are there and said that's what they needed.
Right.
It's not acreage. It's, it's what are their utilities.
Yeah.
For the most developed.
And remainder of the ERCs remain with that, that parent, that track.
So if you get, um, a proposal for this land back here and they want to build single family homes on one acre each, what's going to be their responsibility? If they give you a plan and you determine, oh, okay, each one's one acre, each one's one house, then there's 50 ERCs.
We, we would, we would come up with that calculation basically, 50 ERCs. And then at that point, the board would need to make a decision whether you accept, accept that and sell them only 50 or whether you want to sell them more or make them pay more. Because you do, you see, you own those ERCs.
But soon as somebody bought it, they would have to start paying, right?
Right.
Right.
Going to build that.
Uh, well now, in the case of the land you own, I think there's the room to negotiate a deal that if they're looking to do it over the period of five years, 10 units, you could say.
Defer.
Buy 10, second year you buy 10 more.
Yeah.
You, you basically have set up a contract, a development contract with them.
So you, you own the property. You're going to make them pay the 200 ERCs until it's done?
No, no, because you.
You have to know what they're building.
In the case of that property, you own them, so they're not, they're not, you're not receiving any money from that right now. So you own it, you're going to sell them individually ERCs as they need them or whatever you choose to do.
Yeah. And now you mentioned, you know, you're not going to discuss the six acres, but yet if they're going to the county or they have a building permit already, why haven't they come before the board and try to adjust these ERCs? They're not and, you know, my concern is, and I'm not saying this is true, but those two people developing that are your neighbors. Are you part of that development? Is why you're avoiding it?
Avoid, what, which six acres are you talking about? The one across the street or the one with the tower?
Yeah, the, the ones your neighbors own.
I have no interest in anything in that property.
Okay, I just wanted to ask.
I'm just making sure things are right. Okay, that property there, I don't know if the general.
It's just you didn't want to discuss it and yet it was said that the county knows what they're doing.
I didn't want to discuss the towers. We don't know what's going on. That's the secret, six acres I was talking about. Where the tower, the sign, they put a new sign up there, Terry, while you were gone. And it's talking about 150 unit tower going up there or something like that.
What they got the ability to develop up to is what the sign says.
It says that there's also, uh, 10, um.
10 stories.
That is one there.
And that's according to the zoning. There are a lot 10 stories.
That's what.
Zoning, yeah.
And it can do the same thing back on these 48 acres. That's got the same zoning.
I, I'll talk about the other stuff because the other stuff is, is costing, uh, I know you, uh, it's costing like $40,000 or $30,000, whatever it is in CID assessments on that property that's there now. So it's like $115 a day, uh, that he has to pay for that property. So, um, in, in other words, is the board telling me that if he came through with a, uh, a proposal, okay, for, uh, five structures, again, if I say it's five homes, say it's, uh, rezoned or whatever, it becomes five homes total. And he's only paid five ERCs. Once it's done.
We're talking about the, the, the property across.
Well, any contractor, yeah.
Yeah, the, the hotel side.
No, no, the other side.
He's talking about.
The front.
C4.
Oh, okay, the C4. Yeah. No, the original amount of the ERCs would carry over no matter what unless he's able to dispose of them to.
But he can sell on the sun stream.
Right.
Yeah.
See, the difference for us is we own that property.
We own that.
That's what I'm, I'm.
I, I get that.
It's different for me. It's what.
I just.
We also keep on.
No, I know we don't.
Yeah.
But just, but to sit, to sit there and say that those ERCs, that somebody else planned the development so that, that, that locks that in so that the next person that comes along has to still pay that, that just isn't, that makes no sense to me. It makes no legal sense that it's history that determines what the ERCs are. It should be either goes back to zero, whatever it was before that first person bought that property.
What about the empty lots? That they were zone one family? We paid for a one family assessment on empty lots. It's the same concept.
How is it the same concept? You can't put anything else on a residential lot. It's already.
That's zoning. That's Collier County zoning that says that. So another parcel, if it's, it's already zoned something and that's what you're paying for on the ERCs.
That's the zoning that you're paying for. It's the plan from the previous builder.
If it's not zoned that way, you can't build it, can you?
Original developer. Yeah, that has nothing to do with the zoning. It has nothing to do with the counter.
I think what we've said in other meetings is that under the rule, say you have your commercial parcel and it has X number of ERCs allocated based upon the original plan. Somebody else buys it, involves a use, it'll have less demands on the infrastructure of the district's utility facility. That person goes to Collier County, gets the site development plan processed and then they ask for part of that, a better utility availability. Then I believe under the rule, they then come to the district and say, listen, here's my equivalent utilization utility purposes and using that 60 board and it's in the rule. And then your engineer would make a recommendation and say, okay, the number of ERCs is now five, four. Now, and the developer may not like that. If you appeal to the board or the engineer may say, what are you proposing based upon your SBT supplemental and 60 ERCs? Is that correct, Terry?
Well. No, we, we would look at is what the equivalent residential connection would be.
Yeah.
And as long as they have on that property at least that amount, then we would provide that letter of availability for that use.
What about the over?
But, but the overage, the overage would stay with that property.
See that, that, why?
Because.
That overage stay with that property.
Because that's what's been assigned to that property based upon the original developer agreement and so forth.
Now you've got a new developer.
He can sell them.
He can sell them and transfer them.
He can excel.
He can sell.
He can sell.
Absolutely.
He can find a buyer.
He can absolutely sell.
He can find a buyer.
And at one time.
On the sun stream.
At this point, no, no, at this point.
Rules that says, I can't sell an ERC until you've sold every one of yours. That's my point. He can't get rid of.
Well, I don't know about that.
Well, let me, let me, let me back up.
But you can sell it.
Well, no, he's right.
Rules that says your claim to be sold first.
Well, and, and, well, I'm not sure about exactly they have to be, that the utility ones have to be sold first, but you've got to approve that transfer.
Right.
You've got to approve that transfer.
What transfer?
If he wants to sell it. To the sun stream, we have to approve it.
Yeah.
No, 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 no. What happens if he wants to, he, he comes up and sun stream doesn't want them? Why would sun stream pay for them before they need them?
Unfortunately, it stuck with him.
Yeah, I think what, but that's what you want to get away. I think what the chairman's talking about is in section five of the rule, procedure to transfer ERCs between parcels under separate ownership.
Yes.
It says once all district owned ERCs have been sold, the owner of any tax parcel subject to assessments of ERCs shall make application of district server all or any portion of ERCs from the tax parcel and transfer them to other tax locations. So I, I, I haven't read that before in detail. I mean, I've gone through these rules or given them a most present declaration, but that's something I could want us to look into for the next meeting, I think.
Yeah, because it's, it's not equitable to keep history on a property like that. I mean, I understand, you know, everybody's going to say, oh, everybody's got to share the expense, but what's right is right. And if we don't do what's right, it's right on this bad property, we're going to be out $215,000 every year. And I know even, even looking at the forecase, that's going to take three years to get. So if we get it, every feet of fill.
But, but I think it's, I think as far as like the transfer of selling, selling those excess ERCs, that's something that we can look at as far as rule, rule development, that we can maybe make, make some changes in that language so that allow that to happen.
That's possible, but they can like sell them back to us or even he, maybe he wouldn't even have to sell them. They'd just give them to us.
Yeah, but later on in the.
And then we can sell them.
Later on in the meeting, based on all the discussions we've all had on the rules, the rates, the charges, the processes, assessments, the ERC, uh, staff is going to recommend that, and Cal, you can slightly silly if I'm wrong, that recommend that there be a separate workshop. The workshop, you don't take action. You articulate your concerns and the staff hears the concern. The staff will come back with suggested modifications or adjustments at a later date for discussion purposes. I mean, I, I think we all agree it's going to be more than a one or two month process to do that. That's what we recommend. And so the workshop would just be on, just beyond.
Let's make that happen.
Yeah.
Now, that's.
That's on the agenda.
On the agenda. I'm trying to jump me to end. I'm sorry. No, I think because we've had, the board and staff recognize, we've had a number of discussions in the last three board meetings, extensive discussion on the philosophy approaches, meaning intent, et cetera. So I think that would sort of focus it, just on the rule, that workshop, just up in.
Yeah, because this is 15 years old, this rule.
Yes.
And some of them are 21 years old. So we need.
It's, I'm older than that. You're going to change me.
And some of those rules were developed before CID actually owns some ERCs.
Right.
So that's a, that's a new wrinkle that, since the rules was wrote, now you do own some CID, some ERCs that you didn't own before.
Okay, so I feel good about that. Okay.
Again, I, I, I give Cal and Dave kind of coming up with workshop ideas. We were going back and forth lately about the rule. Just realized, holy moly, once we sat back and.
There's a bunch of a lot of issues.
Yeah. It's, this is one of the many.
Back to ERCs, it's utility billing rules.
Lot of, lot of cleanup.
And what's nice about the workshop can also even, the board just has discussion. They don't take action. But the board, public can see the discussion and has been.
That's what I can say. It's open to the public.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. Well, I would have.
It's integral part of it to get their feedback. We've had some which are not in the past and others. Also, those kind of, that's very helpful.
Okay, if we can make a change, it's about time government was able to make a change. That's good.
And part of it, we can't.
If the board agrees.
Yeah.
It's a board decision.
Yes, but it's still, it's, it's opened the door unlike the other government that said, no. Yeah, but my understanding is the way this is sitting now, myself as well as these folks here, if they buy that property, doesn't matter what they put on it, they're going to pay for 300 ERCs. Just like I'm going to pay for 20 ERCs on my little plot.
Right.
Now, there you, you're thinking of Zeman's. Zeman wanted to put down 340 by 80 foot parking spaces for RVs. That was their number.
It was 120 ERCs. I'm not talking about Zeman's. I'm talking about anybody who buys.
No, 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 but that was 120 ERC.
My, my, my sentence.
Oh, yeah.
Anybody who buys that property over there is going to be responsible for the amount of ERCs that are attached to it now, which what are roughly, how many?
Zero, zero.
Yeah, see, it's different. We were able to detach ERCs from property. I, I was, it was always with that property because that's how the, the, the original developer decided that's how it was going to be.
That's my argument too.
So there was always going to be that way, but nobody could show me anywhere where that original developer said, you know, that 5 acres out there is going to have X, X on it. And that's how he came up with 10 ERCs per piece because you've got one side that's got an acre and a half with 10 ERCs on it. You have the other side that has three acres with 10 ERC on it. They're identical, but the properties have the size. How did we come up with that? Where is the methodology to that? I've got the same things that you guys work with, the 4.35 that you tells you how many gallons for everything. What can I not find or be provided with? How did they come up with that? Can anybody answer that question? Hold the word.
Yeah, I don't know if in your records, David, you've got the plans that was submitted to establish that, but the procedure is the engineer, I don't know if Ron was the engineer back then or not, but the engineer identifies what's the utility load based upon criteria that everybody uses, including Collier County. And that's how the ERCs are established. I cannot find those plans or any communication from Ron other than that's what the developer said.
Way, way back in 1990 plus or plus or minus.
1990.
Okay, there, there was the developer and the engineer that was on board at the time, they developed an ERC assignment for all the different parcels in the, for the islands.
Sure.
And then that, that became what the original assignment was. Since then, there's been some changes. People have transferred it from one property they own to another property they own. There's been a few over the years that actually reverted to the CID. Uh, and that's what's assigned each of the property. Now, if you don't use all the ERCs, you pay for whatever's been assigned to, what is currently assigned to you and that's based on the current rules. And that first go around in 1990. So.
When the CID began.
Correct. And part of it was to fund the infrastructure at the time that, you know, it was vacant land. A lot of it was vacant.
So it had a value, pretty definitely.
It had a value and how that value was determined goes back to the original developer.
No problem with that, you know, but when somebody else comes in and gives you a development plan, then you have to go after that.
So what do you, you have to develop a plan.
Well, I know, but, but when one comes up wherever the, uh, the, 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 uh, history of keeping ERCs on that property, that, that has to be changed. That's what I'm talking about changing. And he said that, that'll come up in the workshop. So.
Right.
As long as.
It's going to be a global, I, I suggest it be a global look at the rule.
Yeah. So how do, how do.
I think at the end of the screen was to talk about.
When you get to that section, they'll set a date.
I know, I kind of know that. I apologize.
Okay, we're going to get to it. Uh, the next item I had last meeting, you guys approved the newsletter. You said put it in the next bill. Uh, I made, uh, two real minor changes. I put myself as the contact for still from the board, but on the bottom it's the, you've got any questions, contact, and I put my own name there. And then, uh, Elena's not here, but Mitch is providing us, because there's still a little bit of room. It'll be, it's a two sided or two pages, but we'll put it front and back, one page, double sided. And then, uh, as far as the auto call for the boil water, we're going to put a provision on that since Mitch gets us the wordy. But it'll go in this utility billing and, uh, which they're reading the meters next week. Okay, is, is that agreeable? You guys okay with that?
Yeah.
Um, the parcel 13, the airplane club, they have hold that. That's, that was done at the beginning of the month. Uh, record retention policy, um, I just wanted to, and, and I ran this, got a consensus from your attorney, but, uh, I'm not accepting any text requests anymore. It's just any request for public information. It's on the website. It's always been that way. Uh, by contacts information, there, my cell phone's not on that contact, but, uh, it has to be a written request. Even a text is public information.
So you mean a written request, email is a written request?
Yeah, or emails. By email will provide whatever. Uh, and they have to provide specific information. Uh, I'm not allowing anyone into access to our computers. I'm not allowing anyone to just come in and go through your, your printed material. All your records are kept. We, we have several different, uh, but everything's redundantly backed up to our server and to the cloud uh, on records that you have to keep and that's called, uh, DocX. We use a program. It's by community and, uh, there's various different, uh, sections. Uh, you've got recording, you've got accounting, general information. There, there are four categories. And then as you break down that file, then you've got individual things like minutes and resolutions and et cetera. Uh, so that's all done. Then we also have, uh, we have to keep records of proceedings. That's everything. When I get back, Chris will take all of this big book that you just got and then my notes, anything like that, that has to be the signed minutes and so forth that Russell signed. That goes in the record of proceedings. We've got all the records of proceedings, anything from any public record. And that's, uh, both electronic and hard copy. Now, all records don't have to be kept. Uh, but we follow the state record of retention policies and we go from there.
Um, so everything's, everything's fireproof, waterproof, based on, well, based on cloud keeping and keeping it.
Well, that is, yeah, but, but it's fireproof, waterproof is where applicable, where it's practical. I mean, there's nobody that stores their records in a fireproof environment, I.
Yeah, we talked yesterday about that, it's insofar as it's practical, you know, maintain it in that kind of condition. One other, I guess clarification is from the standpoint, if someone wants to make a global public records request, I want to come in and look at your records, that would require, in my opinion, because custodian is also responsible to safeguard the records, the integrity of that, would require extensive clerical or supervisory work to have a person sit down. In other words, I, whether the public may say, I want to see all those books that are behind you at your bookshelf. Oh, okay, I'll go in this room, I'm going to get my court for $25, because it's a damn, next number of dollars per hour that you're going to have to pay for, who's engaging in clerical supervisory work, because I need to maintain the integrity. I had that happen to me once, I went to the county attorney's office, the public records review, and box the documents that I need to look at. They had a paralegal sitting across the desk from me the whole time, because they need to maintain the integrity of the original records. And so that's a cost that can be charged to the individual making the request, and that can be estimated in advance. And the district can say, or custodian can say, if this is what you want, $2,000, we need a deposit of $1,000 for $500. I mean, so there are ways to allow the public access to the records, but also recognize the entity, if it gets to be too extensive, clerical supervisory work receives some amount of compensation to take care of those extraordinary costs. The statute does say how much it costs per page, kind of eight and a half by 14, or by 17, double sided, et cetera, et cetera. And as far as getting documents off of the computer, as Cal mentioned, he needs to maintain the integrity of the system. I once offered to provide a flash drive to the local government, saying, here, put it on this flash drive. And they said, no, we are going to buy one and you pay for that flash drive, we're going to buy one that's sealed in a packet so that we know that the integrity of the flash drive is not compromised. We don't know, nobody trusts you, we've known you for 30 years, but that may be a flash drive we use ourselves, it carries malware, something else. Also, Cal has on his website, the contact information for the custodian. And his cell phone number is not different, it's office, cell phone number, email and fax. And Cal, when you want to set up some other places, do they set up separate public information request format? For clarification, Cal, they can make a phone call to you request, but for clarity, it also helps the customer to put it right. Now, with no confusion, they say, hey, listen, this is, let me make sure this is what you want from a public records perspective. The idea is not to be, it is provide the access, but also recognize the integrity of the record keeping process.
We're responsible too.
Yeah, there was a long, I don't know if the attachment made it to the, Cal, your attachment, I don't think it made it to the agenda pack you requested.
Right, oh, I say it's done, I sent it to the board. But the, your, the letter you prepared for me to send was.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just want to, real quick. The government sunshine line manual, and I retain the treaties on this too, because I'm being stonewalled. One of the very first things that it says in there is an agency includes restrictions on requesting, requesting public records. And it says no, and it says that I don't have to make it in writing and so forth. I've read Supreme Court cases on it. Every time I try to get public information, I wanted to go to the division office and make my requests in person, but I'm being locked out and told that I can't get in. So I talked to First Amendment counsel, I talked to the attorneys, and what they're telling me is the way that I'm being treated to try to gain access to the public records, by the way that you're putting in stipulations as what I have to do to see them is illegal. One of the things I've attempted to do is talk to your attorney at the request of Cal, and I waited 10 days to hear from him, and I got no response from him, and when I asked why he doesn't call me back, he says so. So.
Oh, that was, for correction, that was not my response, my response was, records request get directed to the custodian of records. I'm the board's attorney, I'm not Mr. McNamee's attorney, I'm not going to engage and debate on following the access to public records with Mr. McNamee or any other resident. I don't think the board wants, must be paying for that either, typically.
And I deal with. It's standard. If you're not, talk to the attorney, the comment was, if you, because there was a suggestion that he has an attorney, and I said, you could talk to our, your attorney can talk to our attorney.
I'm in a complication, I, Mr. McNamee is characterizing, or he wants to characterize, in my opinion, based upon what was outlined in this letter, it applies mechanism for him to review the public records of the district. And again, if he wants to go to the district offices at reasonable business hours, and that's what they also talk about in the case law, and in the sunshine law manual, then you can make that appointment, go look at that, or come on in. And again, if he wants to look at all the records of the district, that may require extensive clerical supervisory personnel, and then Cal would work off, in my opinion, he should work up an estimate, provide that to Mr. McNamee and say, is it, here's what it's going to cost you, please give us a deposit. The case law, the attorney general's opinion also applies to that, to do that. And, and so if he wishes to do that and continue, then Cal, if you work up the estimate, Mr. McNamee will provide that.
We'll put all the district records on a thumb drive, two thumb drives, however, I mean, you guys, when we took over from Severn Trent, we had 113 boxes. And a lot of them wasn't even needed.
Yeah, one other aspect to the public records law is, custodian also is responsible to review any confidential information and to redact it, you know, sort of security numbers, certain bank account numbers, maybe you just, there's a whole laundry list why them are exempt for confidential. And that is a task that the custodian has to engage in also. If Cal is comfortable that the records that he has can be just thrown out of flash drive without going to that review or redaction, he believes needs to go through and do that, that's another thing, that's an additional cost.
No, there's time to prepare a thumb drive, but you know, there's, you know, it's, that would have to be paid for. I don't, my people have specific responsibilities, and if I have to pull somebody away from something, then that's something.
Well, if it takes more than an hour of due work to understand it.
You're looking at a week to put everything on a thumb drive, or a week for someone to come in and view them. And there's no, I, I won't even give a board member access to our computers.
I would suggest you work up the estimate, provide that to Mr. McNamee.
If that's a request, if, if he wants to break it down, I've already sent quite a bit of information that I was able to get on one email, I think I copied you on that, Russ, but on one email, but I, you know, it. Tell me what you want, we'll, we'll provide it. I just want to.
Yeah, I think, and that was in the long.
That's exactly.
It's a letter that's sent.
So, I cannot walk into your office, you request to see a simple document that you may have in right.
Tell me what the document is.
When I get there, why can't I do that? Because that's what the law is.
Okay.
That's what the law is.
I, I mean. Reasonable, if Mr. McNamee wants to walk into your office and say, I'd like to look at X, Y, Z records, our personnel's in your office and say, give us a few moments we can gather, or it's going to take 10 days to get that because it's buried, or with the volume we're asking for, if he wants to go up to your offices, you make an appointment to do that. But I would suggest that you identify, as opposed to broad watch, we've asked you in this letter, Mr. McNamee, to identify. And if you, I don't know if you provide this to your attorney, and now that you have engaged your attorney, I really cannot help without the incentive of your attorney, and who's your attorney?
I can't talk to you either.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Okay, I, I just want to, does the board have any problems with the way we're administering records requests? It is all legal.
I would suggest, right now, Mr. McNamee, if you can ask Cal if I'm going to go today or tomorrow, on Sunday, and, Cal, what do you want to look at?
Have somebody to sit next to him to make sure he's not keeping records.
That's correct.
I've got to have somebody that is going to assemble, we've got paper records in a secured storage area inside the building, but it's upstairs, so we've got to bring all those down. We've got some in the downstairs, the more recent ones in the downstairs storage area, got to bring those out. We will have to print off the screenshots of all the records on either SharePoint, because we've got two computer programs that we keep all your stuff.
Yeah.
One is SharePoint, one is Doc Fall.
Yeah, I think the critical part is, we ask.
And then we've got the.
Once we have the identification of requesting that is sufficient.
I think it's called professional courtesy.
Permit us to identify the record, we will provide you with the estimate. I mean, I don't think we receive that yet, every year, as the summary.
No, just, I want to come in and look at it, everything.
That's not what I said at all.
I, you've got a copy of the, or the.
I said I want to come in and look at everything?
Grab that.
I'm planning to come to your office to look over some of the CID's public records.
Yeah, will I receive access, yeah.
So. I still plan to come to your office tomorrow to inspect public records. Still waiting to hear when I may have access to the public records.
Yeah.
That would be taken as an. I know, that's, that's the way.
Yeah, I, I figured it's all.
Again, I think Cal responds to the three page letter attached, provides the detail and the guidance for Mr. McNamee, which the district has won, but always ready to open it.
Okay, so we will continue in the direction, I mean, this is all public records requests. It's the same process that we use with any of our clients. The, the next thing I had to talk about is utility billing. And we get a lot of issues where somebody will call, turn my meter off, nobody's there, why do I have usage? Water goes through the meter, it's there. You know, and typically what happens, Mitch goes out, and Mitch being the nice guy he is, will walk around and see if there's anything, and he's found leaks at almost every time. But they don't want to, I've got a letter from a lady who says, there's no way I can use that much, and I'm only paying $17. And it, so I put in, in the attachments, you had a copy of a, basically a procedure that we want to follow. We'll put this on the bottom of the next utility billing, and it says that they could, with the new meters, they could be high, because you're getting a better or accurate reading. But if the water goes through the meter, and typically what we plan on doing is somebody calls, says, do I need a meter check? Okay, go out and read it, they could see the thing, and if it's, if it's higher than what you read, then it's okay. If it's, if it's the same as or lower, then something's wrong, and we'll go out and look at it. If the, if the water goes to the meter, they caught it, it's there.
As soon as my meter was installed, as soon as I knew it was installed, because I saw the old meter was laying on the ground, I went and checked, turned everything off, and then I went and checked my meters, and it wasn't, it's all digital. And you can read them perfectly.
Yeah.
Wasn't broken.
Yeah.
Not, not a leak, so I had no leaks, I knew everything was good, nobody was flushing the toilets, nothing. So I, you're proud of what you're doing.
Well, the, the other problem is, per your rules, there's a $10 turn on, turn off. So people go up north or wherever they're going for the summer, and they turn the water off themselves. And we told this lady, said, well, have us turn it off, we'll verify. If we turn your water off, we send somebody out to turn your water off, and there's usage, you're not going to be charged. Mitch is going to put a lock on it, and the waters, that we know that no water went through that meter. But they don't want to do that, they want to save the $10. And they, so they turn it off themselves, it's one lady I talked to her, and she said, well, you know, the, the handyman comes out and makes sure the toilets flush and water's running this and that, so you're using water. And she said, well, it shouldn't be that high. So.
But it is.
It is, if it goes through the meter, it's there. And if they, we won't guarantee there's no usage if they shut it off itself. We have to shut it off to verify, Mitch has to shut it off to verify. Now, there is a $10 turn on, turn off fee. So, you know, it's going to cost a little bit of money, but they won't have a utility bill during that period of time till we come back and turn it on. You guys, we had asked you when COVID started about we have been charging late fees, and you guys said that was okay, and we have been turning anyone off for delinquent bills. We'd like to go back and take that restriction off. So, no problems? Okay, so we will start charging late fees and we will be disconnected for down payment.
I work at the hospital, and I'm going to tell you COVID's bad right now. Real, real, way, way more than we had in the hospital before, so I don't know where it's going, so. You know what I mean, if they start locking crap down again.
So you want to wait?
Well, you know, I have, I had a kid that I work with, and he's got a younger brother, and the kid's in middle school, and they, they had four in his class, now COVID, this is only, you know, a couple days, and they're going to be in that school, you know, it's already going to be, it's going to be everywhere, and the kids aren't getting that sick or anything. But I just don't know, well, he's coming, but I thought it was, I worked in the ED, so I see him as they come in. He's been many, 10, 12, I mean, at the peak last time, we had 136, we're up to 180. Now, now they're on intubated or anything like that, but we had a, we had a 33 year old kid that was intubated for two weeks, and he had no underlying conditions, nothing. So, and he finally, we got him out, he's okay, but yeah, I don't, I don't know what's going on with this right now.
So what do you want to.
I don't know, I just mean, I don't know what happens, because this is going to move north. Okay, this is just going to, as, as people go inside, it's going to, it's going to move north, and when school's open in September and whatnot up north, it's, I just, you know, if they, I'm not talking about us being locked down, but they may lock down the states up north, and the people can't get down here, and I, I don't know, I don't know what to tell you about that. I mean, how much are we talking, how much money are we talking?
Late fees have been pretty high.
Yeah.
I think the word got out that we weren't charging late fees, so we're getting a lot of late.
What happened to that auto bill pay, like, you know, I mean.
Well, their auto bill, if they're on auto billed.
But I mean, we can't push more of that auto bill out there.
Well, we can't require, that's their option.
Right.
So if more people sign up for auto pay, yeah, that's great, but a lot of them aren't.
I think we, I personally, go ahead and put it back, all, we can address it later if it becomes an issue again.
Okay.
Right.
All right.
I'm just telling you, it might come up. We go ahead, so.
So.
Hey, Cal, how does the, the neighborhood know we could do auto pay? I didn't know that.
Well, it was in the minutes.
It was a long time ago.
Yeah, it was quite a while ago, but.
Yeah, I, I used to think we couldn't either, I actually gave misinformation on it, and then I got it, it is on the website, but, and you have, so I just, I just finally signed up.
Maybe we can put it out on the bill.
Yeah, on the bill, that's usually where I would look for it.
It's a bill?
Yeah. Yeah.
Because a lot of people have been asked to be about why. I don't know, there's enough room with what we've got now, but maybe we could put it in the newsletter. Yeah. Because we had a half a page there, and I don't think Mitch is going to take the half a page.
They probably should go in permanently on every, on the bill, just somewhere on the bill.
If you are interested in auto pay.
Yeah, it would help us get the money sooner and less late charges, I think.
It's, the ones we get earliest are the ones that send the pay it themselves. They, people will, as soon as they get that bill, they send a check, so.
That's not me.
The auto, they come in later, right on the due date.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are this utility bill that we're going to discuss later, are they pre-printed or are they?
Uh, well, they are, we bought a, a program that prints them off.
So, so in other words, we don't have a whole, so we can handle the program, correct?
Uh, for a fee, yeah, I mean, I've got to pay a programmer to make it change.
Well, I'm saying, if you, if you, you could add that to your bill, they'd be available.
The bottom part is, that's new, that's what we're saying would be added this time.
Harford.
So, but we might have room, I've been, I'll talk to Jennifer. And we might have room to put it on the bill, but if it's not on the bill, it'll go on that newsletter that'll be inserted.
Yeah, we'll put it in the, in the white area where the balance is due and, you know, change to auto pay or anything like that. You know, auto pay is available, I mean, somewhere, we could find, we could find some place to put it on there.
They will get the word out somehow, either the newsletter or on the bill. And if we get it on the bill, we'll leave it on the bill where every bill that comes out is like.
We, we sent out a separate bill for irrigation.
Uh, no. Same bill, it'll either show water or irrigation for, and/or sewer.
Okay, this one just happened to have just water.
We just grabbed a bill.
Because, because at the same time, any water that goes through the irrigation meter will be charged also if they have a leak. It will be charged too, just that, you know, right now, we're just saying water meter.
Oh, okay.
We're just saying water meter, that's why I was, water's water.
Now, how about paying online, a lot of people ask if they can pay online.
Now, can't even use a credit card, it's just, right now, it's just set up, uh, it, it, I mean, they can pay online through their bank. But.
That's auto pay.
So, so, I mean, like, I pay all my bills online through my bank, I just go in.
You just pull the numbers and they send the check.
Yeah, they send the check, or it could be auto pay where you're not. Because, you know, we send the.
That's ACH.
ACH, yes.
With a credit card, you have to pay a fee.
Yeah, right, yeah. And that's the only way you can do it online is with a credit card.
We're not, so you're going to lose two and a half percent right off of that, they pay it online. So they automatically, and then back in.
Yeah.
It's all amount.
Okay. Uh, let's see. That's everything I had, did you want to go through the, I mean, it's almost twelve-thirty, did you want to go through the field report?
No. Okay.
All right, any questions you have on that, get with me. The K's Drive landscaping repair for the lights, you had a proposal from X town that was in the packet that, I think it's the handout.
Yeah, it's in the.
Eighteen hundred dollars, you want to do that?
Yes.
I think it's needed.
Yeah, I think the most. Martin, that was eighteen hundred dollar proposal for the light fixture.
I'll, I'll second the, the discussion, is that the one where we couldn't get the the, the light to replace the ones that, that was banned, so they're going to just replace them?
Replace small things, new ones then.
That's fine.
With LED.
Right, LED.
So you'll save something there.
Good.
This is how it's going to be. Oh, okay, on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I didn't know it was paying up. I thought it was maintenance.
The, my opinion, we're having a hard time getting somebody to come out and give us proposals, so we're still working on it. I think that takes us to Mr. Period.
I'll be quick. Uh, trying to set up a meeting with the chairman, Cal, myself can talk with principals of prep, Mac and their attorney, we've been exchanging, sending emails on that. Legislative update, no additional at this time, I'll have some other memos in the future, just to get back to a couple of weeks. That's really it until, well, and Cal, we're going to talk about the idea of the workshop now or wait till, well, that's under rules change discussion, that's our own business. I'll hold my comments a little bit.
That gives us to August, parcel thirteen, and you have your appraisal.
Did you bring it out?
I just, I see it right now. Oh, public. It, there was an appraisal that was received from Carol and Cheryl. And the property is valued, it's a hundred-page proposal, it's pretty expensive. At one million eight hundred and thirty-four thousand? Fifty, fifty, uh, fifty thousand, so.
Pretty close to what? Yeah, yeah, pretty close to what we had.
Yeah, I think that's almost right up to what G D Cungle estimated, I just bumped it up to two hundred, or two million when we started talking.
So if anybody knows Matt Dembrow, I would make sure that he knows that I would hate for him not to know.
Now, just because the appraisal was one point eight billion does not mean that's what you sell.
Yes, yes.
Okay, um, you have two offers, the one that was just, I mean, that's not a serious offer, that's just, they're just throwing stuff out there. Uh, but you do have the Brian Jones offer and they are here. Uh, and I don't know which order you want to go, if you want to talk about listing the property with a real estate broker before you hear Mr. Jones' offer.
I think if I hear the offer and then reject the offer.
Isn't this the same, the same people who already had an offer of two million one?
Yes. Correct.
And now it's a new offer?
Yes, we have a new letter of intent.
Okay.
Based on the appraisal.
Yeah, and that was, I had a question with Cal, you know, about how did he know what the appraisal was when the board hadn't, you know, seen it or discussed it yet? But he said it was public record, because I didn't tell anybody what the appraisal was.
You have to love the legislature of the state of Florida, I'm tongue-in-cheek. There are exemptions for public records for appraisals involving county purchases, educational facility purchases.
Yeah.
Purchases and certain state agencies. Not T D Ds.
Okay.
Uh, you, water management districts, executive branch, the government, et cetera. So you got the pre-lode.
Again, your meetings are interesting.
The ERCs are.
They're going to get more interest.
Do you all have a copy of our, your other intent? I've got extras here I can pass around. Yeah, so I don't. It's in your. This, I've got Brian Jones here, he's going to tell you in just a minute what he wants to do. Uh, I'm his real estate broker and we spoke briefly last month. And this sort of follows the same format as your previous letter of intent. And, Brian, you want to?
Yeah, sure. My name is Brian Jones, I'm owner of Miami Miami Builders, third generation, the name equals all my life. And I'm an RV enthusiast. And I've been to all the national parks, some of you may have visited some of those. And we are sorely lacking in this area in quality RV. And my intention is to develop a luxury RV resort based on what the, the, the marketing study is going to reveal with what can be supported here. We want to work with the residents here, we want to work with this board. Ultimately, when this is developed, we're going to need ERC credits, as I've heard the earlier discussion, and that will help to optimize your, your facilities. So that's good for, good for the economy of, of this community. It's a great report that, that we have reviewed. First of all, you have a portion that is, got the tourism designation. And then the rear portion, which is zoned, currently listed as conservation. So there's a big question as to how much of this property can be developed and how it would be received by all the state agencies, the wildlife people, all of the different hoops that we will have to go through. That's quite a, an ordeal and a process, and I've gone through some of that in, in other developments. There's no sure thing. The first thing, as the report outlines, is to get a zoning change, without a zoning change, do not pass go, it's a dead. For me or anybody else that wants to do it. What I'm proposing, if you accept our, our offer, which is a full price offer basically, I, I'm going to take, spend the money, hire the engineering firm, do the environmental study and do that, that information and get it up to a rezone status, which we're polishing the diamond, we're making that usable and, and going to that, and then we can apply concurrently for our RV development, once that gets through a few of the hurdles. So until you get it moving forward, we can't, we can't promise that we're going to buy it because we don't know what we have, nor do you know what you're selling. And that is consistent with any development that's done, you probably are aware of that. So we want to take the ball and run with it, we want to, that'll be no expense to you, we will need some, some authorizations because we don't own the property, but any advancement in that is, is a benefit to the property in the event that we hit a, a stumbling block that is not over. It needs to be an alligator sanctuary or whatever might, might come down the road. Uh, so there's a whole lot of unknowns in that, in that permitting process that could be deal breaker. Or we can figure out if they say that the conservation area is greater than, because it needs to be greater than for whatever reason, then, okay, we don't have this much useful area, we have this much less. And we would be willing to, to hold to the cost per acre and adjust it as need be, not, not jump ship. So it's going to be a process that we would be going through and we would report to this board with meetings as, as you need to, to show you how we're progressing with this. But once we get to certain benchmarks, then we can, we can lock it in and, and do our project. But the, the monies we're going to spend are significant in doing this. And the option you have is, is you could say, well, we'll, we'll do it ourselves and spend your funds to get a zoning change, I don't think that's the business that you are into and I don't think the public probably wants you doing that. And I've got a, a background and a track record doing that, but the more I think I know, the more, the less I do know, because that there are so many different agencies and anybody that gives you an assurance, I would really no one knows for certain what can be done these days because of the political environment with the different agencies, particularly environmental. And the residents, certainly the residences have to agree to this. There's a gun range there, the luxury RV people want to be next to a gun range, mosquitoes are there, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So there are some negatives that we're, we're dealing with. And we still think it's, it's, there's a beautiful, beautiful canal there. There are some, there's nice ambiance here and there's a certain type of people that want the natural Florida experience and you can get it right here. I think it would be a boon to this community to have something of that quality. So that's it, do you have any questions?
All right, cool. Number one, I think I provided.
You did, I, I have it over there.
The, our definition of a luxury RV.
Brian's got a copy of it.
Yeah, the class A, super seas, motorized, uh, no, no travel trailers. No fifth wheels. No, fifth wheels are okay. Okay, fifth wheels.
What I would like to do is that I, the, the the Prevosts, the million-dollar motorhomes, love to have as many of them as are practical, because that, that's the most economical driver that we have. But we have to be pragmatic with what is the market and do we want, do we want the Boy Scouts to be able to go camping out here? Maybe we do, if you want just, you know, what is the market going to support, what do we want as a, a community? Do you want to be just for the rich and famous, or do you want to have retired folks that, friends and neighbors that can come on down and enjoy, enjoy this nature? So you, you, and there may not be enough market for million-dollar motorhomes. Those things can be quite pricey, as, as you well know. I would love to do that and if the market says we'll do that, that's the best, that's the highest and best use. And that's what this report basically says, highest and best use is kind of a coin toss between agricultural tree farm and RV. And it outlines a number of, of cost prohibitive items. Improving the roadways and so forth, coming to it, might be a county requirement, I could see that as a possibility. So as I go through this zoning process, get more information from engineers and consultants, what is my contribution going to be to the preserve area in the back, how much property are we going to, to give up? And I see that potentially as a positive, because the more nature you have, the nicer you can tuck in the, the RV spots. It could be really a desirable, I don't want a starting can. I want something that's nice, I've seen these others where there's no trees, plan on doing quite a bit of landscaping in there to make it palatable and desirable for where I would want to go. I'm an RV-er and I know what I like and so I have that vision of what I'd like to create.
We have to understand that what our problem is, we have, we live in a community. And the community already, we remember what it was like back in the years when it was all travel trailers. There's a negative impact, a negative feeling among the community of having, other than a quote-unquote luxury RV resort. Uh, you know, Prevosts are fine, you know, there's a few of those, but there's an awful lot of class A RVs in between two hundred thousand and a million or two million, there's a lot of them.
Sure.
There's a lot of us that are in that class A category, but not, not.
It's, well, the economics, the nicer the unit, the more we're going to charge for the rent. It's, it, you don't have to mandate that, that's common sense, that anybody that develops that wants to do the nicest, nicest project possible. Is it going to be a slum, slum your lord kind of facility back here? So, so what we could do is, is as we develop our, our site plan and the, the type, type and size and quality of the units, then we could have you review that in the board subject, approval subject to board, sign off of the site plan. And, and that way you would see what the, the units and size of the spaces and so forth. And I don't know what that's going to be right now, because there's too many, I, how someone could say there'd be X many units, period. There's too many hurdles.
Isn't there, what about the counting, I bet there was a six-month restriction on, maybe one vehicle or one RV or in one location. I bet the most that could be according to the restrictions, but the count is six months, so it'd have to be a mobile RV, right?
Yeah, no, these aren't, these aren't mobile homes or anything, it's, it's an RV park, yeah, no, it's not, not intended to be. Although some people may, may go north, as many people do, and we might need an area to store them, maybe a covered storage area or something like that for the people, so they could vacate the spot and comply with the, with that.
No park models?
No, nothing like that.
The question I had in, in the LOI on, for, under earnest money. Uh, that's, that's, capital jurisdiction, podcast, building grant commission, approval to building a three-hundred-site minimum lot, forty-by-eighty, luxury R, RV resort. And then it says, and other uses on the property? My question would be, what other uses might you have?
Storage for the motorhomes, you need storage, tippleball court, you know, stuff like that.
Right.
You know, those are other uses.
An RV park, I'm thinking.
Maybe they are, maybe they aren't. I don't know what the other might be, but you don't want to have just one, and when we have a site plan, we'll show it to you and I, I haven't negotiated or have an idea what.
I think my question basically is, Toby, you know, other uses, all of a sudden, that's a big nebulous term that could be. a big nebulous term that could be just about anything.
Yes, and one of my concerns on the LOI, Jeff, is my concern for last LOI and the agreement that was generated from that, and it's been touched upon in some discussions about the board having a review and approval. That, that floor goes into the county rezoning as to what uses will be. And that's not in the LOI, a number of other issues ahead. It's open and closing, consent, 30 days after we get zoning, that could be 18 months, two years. Meanwhile, this is how well the market came and everything. But the old idea about other uses, right, I think it's appropriate to sort of spell out.
Just the.
Oh, we have to build for.
We have to go to a contract. I know. We have an actual.
We understand.
Appears as well. Beat up law.
No, no, I understand that. I was just basically taking it to Tony. I mean, when I see terms like that, that is very nebulous and I.
Very broad.
It makes it, you know, like, wow, what else?
Well, we could bring the site plan in as you, if you want to sign off on it, or then we'll bring it back, and then you can be satisfied with it, and that could be a condition of moving forward.
Mr. Jones, thank you for coming, and we appreciate your offer, and I appreciate you coming in person. We just went through and up with time, and we were, my very life's company was openly attempting examples, and I'm not going through that yet. I don't know about that. So I'm not saying you are, I'm just letting you know. Big ambiguities aren't going to work, and we need to know where we're coming. I live here, and this is a community, and we're the only ones that are your direct neighbors. I have to look out for their protection. It greatly disappoints me that there is almost nobody here from working coast. Having said that, it's, I understand, I agree with everything you've said, but there's a high end, high end, real high end RV resorts within 15 minutes of here, one of being Naples Motor Coach, another one being the one up off of Pali Boulevard, and another one being in Everglade City. That one isn't doing so well, and tell me this one isn't doing so well. And so one of our questions is, how the hell are you going to do well? And you answered by saying, well, it's not going to be Prevosts and stuff like that. But that's what we're thinking. And along with it, the ugliness is the Prevosts bring a higher, I hate the word class, a higher group of people. The people who live here and evidence here don't, aren't going to want a campground. They're not going to want lots of people in and out, noise, you know, traffic, and it isn't fair to them. I'm not saying that's what you're doing. I'm just suggesting. I do have a question, Cal. What part of that lot 13 is conservation? I thought it was just a shooting range. Where's the conservation part of it? It's the north end of that.
30%.
It's 20%.
20%. There's a.
Where is it?
On the Carroll, Carroll report, page 42, they show a conservation area. Now, that, but that, that's a zoning map. That doesn't necessarily outline the entire, what the actual property is. So compare that with what's on the front, which I believe is actually what the property is. So, yeah, it's that northern little tip of it.
But it's not the shooting.
It's not, well, the shooting range, according to this map, is shown in the conservation area.
That's conservation.
Right, right. But a little bit of it where that, where this road.
Right in the center.
Yeah, right in here is where the, where it is, right there.
Do we have any idea why? It's just dirt. It's no different than the rest of it. And on there is conservation dirt. If it's on there, I want to understand that being.
It might have gone back to the original zoning that was established for the entire parcel.
Now, when you say zoning, is that what I'm saying? Retention base. What is it? So retention base. That's a part of your stormwater. So when you say zoning change, is that what you're talking about?
We have to get, and it's a permissible use, but you still have to have a rezone according to your, the report you prepared here to do an RV park.
Rezone of that section.
Yes, it still has to be rezone, and the estimate is at least six months, which is probably about right. And then the other permitting can be done concurrently. But until you have that, you've got swampland, basically.
You have sections you can't fill.
Yeah.
And you've got a piece that's RT, and you've got a piece that's conservation.
Yeah, and there, there's a discrepancy on the page you noted there. It shows the half of the property being conservation, and in the writing, it says 10 or 20% is conservation. Listen, we'll set that out, and that's why I'm saying we need to, if it's not usable, if it's usable, fine. If it's not usable, it is what it is. So those are the kind of issues that we hope to, you know, we'll discover those along the way, and you will have, have that information.
I don't have the LOI, probably we should.
Here, right here.
Okay. Let me just say a couple things. It's not because of you, and again, we appreciate you.
Three minutes.
Well, with Seaman, I don't appreciate that. You took the half of the other. On Seaman, we never had any money. We wasted six, seven months. They were calling all the shots instead of us. They kept changing, moving the goalposts, and they wanted us not to have it for sale while they were doing their due diligence. Due diligence is part of doing business. To take it off the market, I don't know if you asked for that. If you did, I don't agree with it. Until you're ready to give us, or anyone is willing to give us a deposit in good faith, and you're ready to move forward, due diligence is part of doing business. But it's got to be up for sale. We're here to sell.
I'm going to pursue the zoning change, which is going to be quite expensive. I'm going to engage the engineering firms, do the environmental studies, and all to survey. Those are expensive things to get done. So there is being money spent, it's quite significant in getting to that, in getting to that process. So, and if you do decide to market it, anybody else is going to, no one can tell you what you can do there. I'm willing to take that step, and I'm willing to share that information with you and work. I'm going to need ERCs. We're going to need to work together to make this palatable for the community, and I'm giving you a final sign off. I don't know what else I can do. I think you, I'm your best guy to do this.
I don't know that.
If down the road, it becomes impossible for some reason, all the work that those engineers have done and whatnot will be given to you, right? It's a centipede of value thing.
They were all going to be in the contract. Again, just a couple of points, the property can't be marketed or advertised in contract with anybody else. The calls for Mr. Carr's from their commission, 4,000 miles.
From us?
Yes. It happens only with approval. And so there, and what I would suggest is, because it talks about a purchase agreement from 45, before deciding to do the LOI, that there's a lot, if you recall, our red line in the last document.
Let's go second. You've already got a template.
I think there's a lot in there that the board was comfortable with.
Yes.
And part of it, in this public record, they won't see much, Brian, is that issue about, we've talked about it, about plans come from the board for approval, issue comes to the zoning process, and you need to sign off of the building to go through the zoning process and the applications.
I think Tony's done hundreds of these.
Well, it's. I've done right forever, but Jones forever too. Just saying that Bill, I would have built many, many years ago, Bill Jones. The board may be inclined to say, we like the number, we like this opportunity, but come back with it all in a form of a contract, not just the LOI. We're all going to begin doing the work. It's just through the agreement, I have a proposed agreement. So in all the detail we're talking about now, you can see it at that time. Cal, I don't know, as opposed to doing an LOI and then doing the purchase agreement, so.
Well, I'm going to, if the LOI is accepted, I'm going to move forward, and then I can bring more information, but I, I'm resistant to spend a lot of money on consultants without.
I'm just talking about the contract.
Yeah, the contract.
This is with Mike, I have no mic to yell.
I think with the kind of president, I think we've gotten this far. I have real estate license, not commercial, but I get it. I want to put it out to market. I want to give it to a broker. I want to see what the hell is really worth, and competition is best. I'm not happy that they downshifted. I get it, not happy about it. I'm perfectly happy paying Mr. Carr. If he gets us $5 million bucks, I'm happy paying him 40%. That's what makes it work. He's bringing a buyer, he's a procuring cost. I have no problem with that. But let, no offense, letting you jump in front of everybody else, and as far as Michael's concerned, we've gone this far, we spent money to have it appraised, I want to put it out to the market, I want to see what somebody's willing to pay.
Can I? You've had two or three other offers. We were in the third position, I believe, and now we've evolved to the first position because the other people recanted or bailed.
We're kind of unaware of all. As far as we're concerned, it was block, and it was Seaman, Preppin, across the street, kind of vaguely made an offer. But as far as this board is concerned, and we used to require proposals, which we kind of done, but we've gone this far. It's time to throw it out. Let's see what the market has to say. If the market comes back, there's no buyers, or if they come back and then Disney World wants it, I think we need to find that out. I think we owe it to the constituents. We owe it to the district. The two things I heard, you need to get it appraised. Okay, we did, and you're right. And you need to give it to a commercial broker, find out who the hell wants to buy it. I think we do.
Remember, if you sign on with a broker, you're going to pay 5%. So you need to get $2 million to clear what these gentlemen are on.
But they got to sell it. And if they don't sell it, they get paid off.
Well, but you're not going to receive any more than what you get off of this before.
Well, they get three, or they get five. Everybody seems to think that land's got gold on it. I appreciate what you're doing.
Who's everyone thinks it has gold on it?
People across the street do.
But it's appraised. Did you read the.
Well, they made a little bit more than that.
Right.
And you can make.
It can RC, RC, ERC costs, impact days.
Yeah, that's part of the, this is not an easy project to make, part of the fun to make work.
And in the appraisal, you have the other property, the other offers are in that appraisal, and it's a very good thorough appraiser in appraisal, and it's a coin toss, and the appraisal's opinion between an agricultural tree farm kind of use or an RV park, and he kind of leans, it's, it's a coin toss.
And the other uses are less valuable.
But they're not gone. They're an appraisal, not an opinion. The market is gone. You put it out to the market, as you know better than anybody, and you see who wants to buy it. If he thinks his house is worth a million bucks, and nobody wants to pay more than $700, that's the market. But if somebody comes up and they say, I don't want to pay a million for it, are you going to say no? Case in point, Bruce Holochek, that was a toilet trailer park that was owned by Sam Marchant, this lot we're talking about. She was upside down. She owned the CID millions. Bruce Holochek came along because his son, he wanted something for his son to do, and he gave him $10 million cash for it. Was it worth it? No. Is it worth it today? We don't know that. Do I think it's worth it? No. I think it's worth $2 million. But the market needs to determine, and you can be part of that market, but if somebody considers they want to pay us 2.5 or 2.6.
Well, the LOI talks about 15 days for acceptance, I think. So you better, till the 26th, I think, to consider it.
So you have a proposal, the board has to decide if you're going to accept this LOI or reject it, and.
Anybody that's going to develop this land, is anybody going to give a retainer to hold it and allow other people to put offers in while we're doing it?
It's not unusual to have backup offers, right? That's what I'm saying. A backup offer is a first to go, a second.
But it doesn't interfere with his offer.
No, you can keep on selling.
Now, how can you keep on selling it? No, I understand what he's going, I mean, once he gets to that point, this is why I'm saying if we went and let Tony, Tony knows pretty much what we want. You came in board when we write the very end to Seaman, and you took that LOI and massaged it to make it what we were looking for, and then Seaman said, no. So you know what we're looking for, what we're not looking for, and you know.
Yeah, one thing, Brian, sorry, Brian. Mike and Brian, is that part of it was, this contract also is like a $50,000 option. It's a free look for 19, 20, 24, whatever it takes to get the zoning approved. There's no hard money ever. So that was part of this discussion. So if the board is willing to say, okay, and what I drafted was a public record, because it's quite a power, is to give that version iteration. It's not final because we never did the blessing, but it gives the thought, an approach of, here's a form of contract that you may want to consider, looking at every mic, we'll get it drafted, submit it to the board as the purchase agreement. For example, in here, you talk about the district doing the alte survey of the property. And that's more detailed survey of the property. It's not cheap, or it ain't, right there. Or just to make the ultimate.
See, what I think is going to be a problem, okay? You want to get, and it's really a catch 22. You want to know what you can build. You can't do that until you get the zoning. Don't know if it's even developable to you. Right, right. We want to know what you're going to build before you get the zoning, and that's a problem. This is, this is the catch.
That can be just the contract, because the process can be that before anything gets submitted to the county for.
Before he spends any money here.
It comes to the board, the board says, yes, go ahead, go forward, and meet the county about this concept. And then when it comes back at the county pre-application meeting, the county said, you need to do X, Y, Z, because the full list of stuff that every staff has. And then their team would get together with their consultants and say, okay, here's how we're going to address it. And if they still want to go forward, then they would come to the board with the application documents, the application, regional application, site development application, all the details that go into the application, the county comes to the board with that and say, here's what we want to submit to the county. You as a property owner need to sign off on the application. You need to authorize us to act as your agent. That's when the board has the ability. I think that's what you all are envisioning. And it has to, again, the way the Seaman contract was, you had no choice. You signed whatever they put for it that went to the county, right?
But we're talking about 10% of the problem. So it's not if it can be developed, it's how much of it can be developed. So worst case scenario is how you look at it. If that 10% can be developed, do I still want to do this project on this lot that's 49 acres? That's their fault. If that answers no, you're not the right buyer. If the answer is yes, and then you get the zoning variance, you win. That's the icing on the cake.
The answer is yes, because here's a letter of intent, and he has read that, and I believe it's 20%.
Okay, that part's all okay. We don't want to throw the baby out with the bath for us, but we do really need to market it first. The biggest criticism the old CID board had, one, biggest one, why the hell didn't you put it up for sale? In four years, that land has never been commercially marketed, ever. It's been on the CID page. It has not been in the Boston Globe. And all I'm suggesting is, don't throw them out. Put them on hold. Take the offer, extend your offer. But we put it out on the market, we pick a commercial broker, we see what the market will pay it. If nobody wants to buy it, we see what you want to do. But we've had two buyers willing to pay 2.1 million, 2 million, okay? And we haven't advertised it. So it must be worth something, somebody knew something, and Seaman was within pennies of the appraisal. We kind of all knew that too.
The other thing is with that new property across the street, I think, you know, I think we should put this up at the same time. You're bringing more people out here, and I'm not saying not you, I'm just saying I am very interested in seeing if there's somebody else that, I think it is a great property. I absolutely agree with you. I have that same view, and I love it. So I just feel like we need to see who's out there.
Well, there's another consideration. Now there's a horse race. Who the hell knew they were going to do this?
Right.
So now they're looking for somebody to do something with six acres.
When we have 48 acres.
Right.
Plus, plus six more.
Across the street. But here's the problem. They both need the ERCs. They both need the ERCs. There ain't enough for both projects.
You know, you know what I'm thinking is, we wanted an appraisal, we got an appraisal, we have someone who's with interest. Why do we feel we have to delay this? What are we after here?
We need to see what the market will pay it.
Why did we get an appraisal then? Why didn't we just put it out?
Appraisal's not the end all.
Why didn't we just put it out to market to begin with? That's an excellent question.
What's that?
It'd have been marketed, I mean, it's been on the market.
Verbally, it was. No, we contacted developers. We sent out probably a half a dozen developers. We contacted investment bankers, and we pushed it pretty hard. And, you know, we had maybe a half a dozen people that took a look at it, but they weren't RV developers. They were one, wanted to put an alternate relationship development back there. Have we passed on that? Was that offer, we didn't get a formal written proposal. But we had, you know, quite a few people, most of them are foreign investors, that took a look at it, and none of them came back with a written proposal.
Here's the thing, when you read the appraisal, it is what it is.
But it's not the buyer.
No, I understand it. Their first, the first, their first, they thought the best use would be agricultural.
Right.
Doesn't sell you one ERC.
Right.
So that's gone. Their second was surprise, big part. Now, in the listing of pros and cons, there's pros and cons in here that we all know. Number one, where are we? We are not in the middle of downtown Napa. There are no, there are no shops, et cetera, public utilities, et cetera, down here. You need those for things like homes, et cetera, because, you know, people want to be able to get the, you know, goods and services. For part B part, being in the middle of nowhere is perfect. We love it because we don't have to worry about things like that. We want peace and quiet. So me, I'm prepared. I, it's a bird, to me, again, it's the bird in the hand as the bird in the bush. And I take.
I, I agree, but you missed one use, an equestrian center.
I did.
No way would you put that much money up front for an equestrian center.
I called my friends in University of Kentucky, and they're going to bring down Lexington right down here along with the college.
But can I ask a question? They're not the only RV guys. If we put it on LoopNet.com, and it reaches the world, and we give it to a commercial broker, and we test the waters, and let's see if there are any other RV guys.
I think it's repetition. You wanted an appraisal, we did an appraisal. We just keep putting this off and off and off, and financially, we could use the money.
An appraisal, you worried about the money. We're worried about an hour ago. The appraisal doesn't mean that's really all it's worth, one man's opinion. The market dictates it, you know that.
Okay, but once you've got an appraisal out there that's in public record.
Means nothing.
So everybody knows what it prays for.
What do we spend it for?
As a guy, it's a guy.
But then, right in the conclusion, it says CID assessment carrying cost prior to project sellout represented unusual development expense that tends to reduce the price of the developer can't afford to pay.
Okay, but that doesn't.
So, but anybody can read that.
Yeah.
Developer that's an idiot that isn't going to be trying to make money.
Well, the firm you're dealing with now, at public record, they knew what the appraisal was.
Okay.
So anybody can.
That's why you put it out there.
So you think somebody's going to come in with unknown ERCs and all this?
If they wanted, no, no. Zeman did, they can go with unknown ERC.
And where's Zeman now? Where are they?
Why did they really leave?
No, I'm satisfied with the appraisal. I'm satisfied that we have an offer, and I think we need to move forward.
Yes.
I make a motion to put it out to a commercial broker and see what the market will pay it.
I second.
Even if it takes 60 days.
What's, what's the, you got 15 days here, and that's, that's it on this LOI?
They can accept it. It's up to Mr. Jones.
But plus, we would want it to form the format of the.
I happen to be a commercial broker, you know, a very good commercial broker. And I'm not going to take a listing for 60 days.
Why not?
It won't.
No, not commercial.
Just one other question. Okay, you build this out there, whatever it may be, and it says here that you have three feet of fill. Is that only where you've built it, would be only where you?
I think that's for residential, three feet.
That's for the pads for the.
Even the pads, anything you put up, you have to elevate, you have to elevate, right? It's quite onerous, the requirements.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the flood elevations are for RVs, if there is something hard and fast, but now the electrical and so forth, the amenities, they would have to meet some flood code. No, I, the only thing it would be is maybe the electrical hookup that those connections have to be so far off the base flood elevation.
We have a motion and second to put this out to bid, which would mean rejecting the LOI.
Or just putting, they can extend the LOI, doesn't mean we put them out.
I, that's not their offer right now.
Okay, but it's clear, you ready? All the questions?
Okay.
All the questions?
All in favor?
Oh wait, you got a, you have a motion.
Yeah, you have a motion to reject the LOI and put it out to bid.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, motion fails, two to three.
I put forward a motion that we accept this offer.
Well, just, hold on. Wait, yeah.
Yeah, the offer's in there.
I had so many other things I was looking at.
Million eight.
Yeah, I didn't see that. I was reading, I was reading this. You know, that's why I just want to make sure. Everything in the LOI really is going to be subject to Mr. Pierce taking a right.
Review.
Annual recommendation, because I have some concerns about this LOI, so much of the concerns I had about the other.
Right.
You don't accept the LOI yet.
Well, I think what you could do, you can authorize, I think, from my perspective, looking at the LOI, I think we need to be some adjustments. I've recognized we can always terminate at any time at some negotiation. This is the intended guidelines for the agreement. What I, the idea was to have the agreement in 45 days of the execution of the LOI. So that would be two meetings.
This is the promise ring and the engagement party.
Well, I guess what might be, I have a sense of what Los Cal does, David does. General, you all have to go about it. You may get things wrong sometimes, but you tell us by your votes. And not offended if I misunderstood. Stand corrected. We can, we can suggest perhaps that the already proposed buyer take the draft contract that we had before, that I parked up, and say, use this as your basis, starting this is some of the possibility for my idea about free approval of the plans. That's very subtle. And stepped up deposits, and it goes, some of it goes hard on certain track, because right now, none of this deposit was firm, it all goes back. So that, I can.
What?
And Zeman was the same way, it almost, it was the same way. So when did, to interrupt, were the, when do you think we're going to see the 1.8 million? Two years? No, 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 it's all contingent upon the reason, I understand that. It's only. It's going to be years. I understand that. So the idea is, in these kind of transactions, that you have parties, they have a large amount of money, they were expecting Mr. Jones to scrap on the engineers, consultants, neighbor information meetings, advertisements, the filing fees. It's not a small amount.
Hundreds of thousands of dollars usually.
Well, you're a pretty world of payers.
But in the meantime, we're taking it off the buyer.
Yeah, the board can do that, and again, that all gets into the contract, but one way to sort of soften that vote, I think, quite frankly, anybody that comes to the problem is going to want that contingency to get there. I mean, even though the LOI says at the end, it's as is where is, it's not an as is where is contract. If it was as is where is, it gives the million eight. But I think anybody commercially agreed practical to make it offer is going to want to have a resiling contingency in there. So the idea, my perspective, and opinion guidance to the board is to get some compensation for holding off the market, whether it's from now and then it becomes 100,000, the zoning application, or 150 before the planning commission or county commission. And then that all becomes your credit for the ultimate purchase price of closing. And if it doesn't close, after those steps, you still have 50 or 100,000 and something to show for it. Also know where the board, county commissioner staff is, where they are, standpoint of what they are looking at. That's pretty valuable knowledge, by the way.
And right now, we're at 1.85, we're paying him 50,000.
Yeah, and zoning approval state.
Why would you pay Mike the?
Because it's in the LOI.
It's in the LOI.
Yeah, half the zoning approval, half the closing.
I didn't pick up on that. But he's, I didn't do it. He's not going to work. But I thought.
I didn't even change it, so I didn't want to wait till the final.
No, no, but.
So I got half of it.
And zoning approval. Board's inclined to want to go ahead with.
Some of us don't buy green bananas anymore.
That I think, the time, better start working at the nuts and bolts to deal, coming back to you with the proposed purchase agreement. We're not going to say, yay, you like it, no, we don't, or change this, 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 and this. So at that point in time, you're going to have something, sorry. That's just my recommendation. Otherwise, with the LOIs, you keep stretching out.
Yeah.
You get an agreement.
We went six or seven months with Zeman, what did that guys? You're recommending that we?
The board gets a authorized staff to work with the Jones group, Mr. Carr and their attorney, and provide them with the documents that I hearted is a base point for them to come back. And provide staff a draft purchase agreement that we will now negotiate from now the next board meeting.
Then if something comes awry along the way, you get all the documents that Mr. Jones has paid for.
Well, there won't be anything between now and the.
Right, between now and the contract.
Right.
That's, that's agreeable. We can work out the details, and you've gone, had some bad experiences, I'm sorry for that.
Mr. Jones, at the end of the day, I really do appreciate your confidence, and we know you're sincere. And you're also being honest.
But.
But at the end of the day, it's not I am RV resort. You're going to do back there, whatever the market works will fill it for you. So it could be a trailer park. It can be, it can be a campground. It can be anything related to trailers and RVs. It's not going to be necessarily $200,000 RVs or $100,000 RVs. It could be $30,000 camping trip, right? Right.
I don't know at this point. I haven't done the marketing study. My intention is to do the nicest quality RV resorts possible.
And what I would suggest is that in the zoning document, it can be a certain level of detail to give the board the comfortable as to what kind of development for it, as well as, I think I mentioned before, the contract can also say, at the time of closing, we will also propose de restrictions. That to talk about. That's something that works for them economically, but works for the district and you as a whole. And so you not only have the zoning document by common, also the property.
And then, and then it'll all come out in the purchase agreement?
That can be in there to say, I love that blanket put in there, like a template for design guidelines. By way of example, I worked at Westy House in the community of Naples, the color of the bay. That can directly influence one of the earth gates. The way that Westy House would sell a property to a commercial developer or a multifamily developer or a large developer would be, here's a purchase contract, and we're going to go through this whole process of design review. Once we finalize, we will approve, we will then close the deal, and we will impose de restrictions and implement. All of all, we just going to be a product. And that can, that can be in sales.
As long as we have the review at certain points and approval, I think that's the most important thing for it. So, you know, that way, we can, we can get rid of some of the things that we definitely are definitely against, don't want, and, you know.
Well, and I think, I mean, part of the process is that a resiling, even though the applause reader is supposed to be off the county commission chambers, they see people show up, 200 in support, it means a lot. They see 200 people in opposition, it says a lot. But, and again, they're not supposed to look at the hands and say, oh, it's okay. Supposed to look at the criteria and the standard. But if you have a purity behind it, it goes a long way. And so this community will let you know what they want as you go through the contract resiling process. And that is something advantageous to the applicant, too. The applicant just wants to go in, knowing you've got a whole bunch of people in the community opposed to what they want to do. Goes against the odds, goes against the board. So I think it's a big statement, if the district said, okay, we want to review the plan before they go in, and they go in, the county commissioner knows, has information for what the uses are. But Tony, at the end of the day, correct me if I'm wrong, at the end of the day, the market shifts because this market ain't going to last forever, and it goes bang. And it drops 30% real estate. And all of a sudden, God moves up, Jimmy Carter time, or COVID wipes out the world. He's still going to make money. I get it, he's a businessman. And if all of a sudden, there's no RVs coming in there, what's he going to do? We can't tell him what he's going to do. Right? No.
We can't tell him what size trailers they have.
Yes, you can. In the governance and in the.
As we say, if they have an HOA, the HOA documents can tell you what's in there.
Or depending upon if they have PUD versus straight zoning, you may want to have flexibility. I mean, they don't know that yet, possibly. You may want to do the straight TTRV. They may want to say, oops, TTRV is limited to a particular type of model that doesn't really fit. And there might be something else that you may want in there as opposed to what traditionally fits in the TTRV category.
Yeah, so.
Again, that's up to them to decide what the zoning category is, and provides to you what the uses are going to be. You will then see that before it goes into the county. And then if you don't like it, then the contract may go south right then and there. Is that fair?
As I said, some of the, if HOA, in some of the different parts I go in, they won't even allow IBA 34, they won't allow me in because their documents, you know, that's it, 36 or higher, and 10 years or newer. So if you don't meet those criteria.
The zoning document might not have the 10 years or newer, but the government's going to have it. District would be the supplier. That's our, that can be. Nobody's going to break in Mike's house. So again, that's board, the board has a vote, they wish to just say, engage.
So are you saying if the board wants to move ahead, that they would approve, accept the?
No, I would suggest authorize staff to work with and negotiate a formal contract with the proposed buyer, and bring that back to the board the next board meeting.
So moved. That's what I was waiting, hollow, hollow truth. Are you seconded? Darren, you're still there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Did you vote?
Oh, I, yes, I vote for it.
I'll have space. So this is going to be upfront by the time this, it's going to be pretty much what you're.
You say yes.
Even a little drawing, but of course, you don't know where you can put everything yet, but I don't know what's usable with the renovation area. So it's, yeah.
And again, that, the contract will say here's what they intend to do. Every step forward will have the input.
Review along the way.
That's correct.
That'll be spend a lot of money along the way.
Well, no, I honestly, I'll mix.
I get it. What I get.
And so if you can have Mike, is Mike's email address?
Yeah, I don't know for this.
If it's not, you might, you've got my email address. If you can send me Mike Vaviello's.
Yeah, I think it is in there.
My point was, the better, more the better.
There's fabric isn't there?
Yeah, also.
You know what you're gonna go through. So, you know, it's gonna be a gauntlet, but without having that knowledge ahead of time, I, it's it's crystal ball. It really is. But that's why you put everything in there that you think you're gonna do with everything, you know.
And without, since Mr. Vaviello, I don't know Mike Vaviello, or also send him the, it's a draft document of the ZEMAN contract. This is a sort of template to start with. So I think the boards will like some of the concepts or in the step by step review. And again, it's not cast in stone. So just let it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Money they don't have to keep.
And sure, not accessible.
Yeah.
That's tough.
Okay, we skimmed over the real estate broker proposal. Do you wanna just?
Well, that, it, no, we, I thought we declined it.
Yeah, I think board, I think board, I want to just table that.
Table.
Okay, and if this goes south, then we'll do it.
And you know, it's, it's only goes south.
But we are losing, you know, the time is now.
I've been at the board almost five years now. We lost six, seven hundred thousand dollars since I've been here as far as loss.
Loss of revenue. Yes, yes.
It's, you know.
We can't keep surviving like this.
Exactly. That's why we gotta, we gotta do something. And the only purpose are, and RV part pretty much in tree, tree farm. So.
Yeah, it's the county zoning.
And territory force form, you know, or they pull.
You can't honestly believe that because one person says that, nothing else can go in here. You can't believe that. Jesus Christ.
I'm gonna show up with my horse one day and ride around back there and see how you guys feel about that.
When you go to a doctor, he tells you that he has to be done, and he's an expert in the field, and then don't believe him.
This isn't a doctor. When you go, you give a second opinion for the market.
We've already had multiple patients.
Yes. We did what we said we were going to do. We need to do what we say.
We didn't go to market with it. We said we were gonna do that. Yeah, that's why we have all the commercial brokers in it.
We were gonna appraise it and then look at it.
Yeah.
But we have commercial.
We might have gone to market if we didn't have an offer, but we have an offer. And the amount of the appraisal.
What is, what is RFP?
RFP is request.
Request for proposal, I think.
And the, what we have on the website doesn't specifically say to give us a written document.
But we did jam Scott Preppin for one publicly.
Well, if anyone that contacted us, we told they had to give us a written proposal.
Right.
Yeah.
Except these guys. That's right. Sorry. Drew.
So.
Rule change, LOI isn't.
A rule change discussion, Tony and I, there's just a lot of things we'd like to discuss with you. Utility billing, you know, possibly the ERCs. There's just a lot of things. So what we'd like to do is sit down, go over some things with you in a, another meeting just dedicated to rule changes. And, and then, you know, we go proceed with them at that point in time, not at that special meeting, but at another meeting.
Yeah, on page one twenty and one twenty one, those pages there, that gives you an idea. Some of the ones that we'd be looking at, but there's quite a few other ones. Couple of them are more mandated by state legislature that just recently passed. The, the two point one, the three point two, those are our ones. That one on amendment to section four two was create the, officially create a definition for a public pool, commercial pool. So, yeah, that's what we've got.
All right.
Initially, this was, you know, to allow pools to be metered separately with no sewage on them.
Right.
And then I forgot what the other one was. But as we started delving into it, there was just a lot of questions came out. So that's why we felt we should have. Are you guys agreeable?
Oh, I apologize for stepping up. In one aspect, amendments to rate schedules, that's on page one twenty two. The idea there is by adding the section about using the procedure in section one ninety, practical three, five, floor statutes. That's a much simplified hearing process. It's a ten day ahead of time. It's not the rules of all the regular amendment process. And so that gives the ability when we do the more comprehensive rule amendments to take all those schedules out of the rules. Because right now, we had a long conversation about that. And so when we want to change rates in the future, it's not a sixty day process. It's essentially a ten day process. It's much shorter hearing process.
The beauty, beauty of what Tony's saying too is on an annual or biannual basis, you can take a look at your rates and say, okay, what do we need to keep up with CIP?
And you don't have to advertise, notice the development and those rule amendment, what you have to do now to change your grades. So this just makes it an easier process. Public is still a form, but that's. Chairman looks like trying to pull a fast one.
Well.
You're looking at me like.
I'm just trying to understand it in English, I guess, you know.
Right now, there's a more formalized process to change any of the rates.
Right.
You have to amend the whole rule because the schedules are attached to part of the rule.
You know, I talked about utility rates, water rates. You talking about like what we were talking about before. ERCs and everything.
Removing them from old properties and stuff like that.
I was just talking about rates, fees and charges. Connection fees, meter fees, that's all I'm.
That would be one of the rule changes we would make.
Yeah, you have now schedule A, B, and C. And it talks about the different rates, fees and charges, how they, how they are collected and what the numbers are. So to change any of those, if you want to change water usage rate to a dollar per thousand to a dollar one cent per thousand, you have to amend the rule.
Right.
And this amendment could allow you to just have a hearing, just to amend that schedule separately and not have to amend the whole rule.
This is quicker process.
So we can, different parts, we can just do it quicker?
Yes, the rates.
Nine kind of thing.
Other rates.
No.
Just on rates.
Anything else still has to go through the rule change.
Yeah, the rule, the rule has so many pieces to it because it's all of, section five has all the, it has the section five point one customer meter fees. It's in the rule. If you want to change any of that, you have to amend the rule. Meter backflow fees, new service connection fees. And so it's, it's a minimum sixty day process every time. It's just changed anything. And that's all that relates to. And this is just the first step at it. We have some other changes that Cal staff has been working on. I think we just want to get some of them in right now. The board's so involved. Advertise for rule amendment. The hearing will be, will be October. We can do it and make it effective November first.
Well.
That would be on the ones.
No, no, rule amendment, if you want to do this.
Yeah.
You have to wait through the whole workshop.
Well, I, I was thinking we would have a meeting before the next meeting where we would just basically go through it and identify everything that we want to change.
That'd be the workshop.
That'd be the workshop.
Okay. Yeah. So this is just the beginning of it. Okay.
All right.
What is it, everything as opposed to the, yeah.
Everything we talked about earlier, yes, rate, everything.
Yeah, any rule you've got is.
Okay.
Okay, we have your next meeting September tenth. Do you want to do it September third, which is the first Friday? Is there another day of the week that's better? Wednesday, every day weekend.
That's the, that is. I'm gone.
That's not for that.
I'm gone till, right, I was, actually, I'm gone till the day before the next meeting. But I leave the twenty sixth, so some between, before the twenty sixth.
And when will you be back?
The ninth. Our meeting's on the tenth.
Oh, wow.
The others are coming back on the ninth.
I don't think we'd be ready by the twentieth. You're leaving the.
That's next week.
Yeah.
When are you leaving?
I'm not leaving.
No, he said he's. Oh, I'm leaving the twentieth.
You have to stay.
I get in trouble with my son. It's his wedding.
Oh, there you go.
Okay, when were you thinking of the public hearing?
Oh, it's gonna be a while. I mean, I'm gonna say we're gonna do this workshop for public hearing exactly.
So maybe it's better later September or October.
Yeah.
I prefer would be a little later.
How about seventeen?
Seventeen.
Maybe the third. Third Friday, yeah.
Or is there some other time in between? There's too many rich people in here. We're going here, we're going there.
So.
Where's you're going away? You're going away.
I was gonna be gone on seventeen. What about the eighth of September?
I'm not back till the ninth.
Yeah.
How about if you zoom it?
I mean, where do you go?
Would be a official meeting.
It's a workshop.
So you, we can zoom it?
For. For two board, oh, we have forum.
Yeah.
Here on the.
I can do that.
Yeah, your work, just do that.
So still have the meeting here, but then some people would zoom it. Yeah, I mean, we.
Yeah.
All of them.
Yeah.
Just don't lose your internet.
Yeah.
You're talking the eighth then or?
I, whatever you guys say.
I'm out.
Do you need a forum here in person? You do?
Yeah.
Mike, that's the.
I won't be here.
Well, so we didn't know that.
But if you're saying a workshop, you still need a physical forum.
Yes, my, you know, some disagree. My approach always is yes.
That's the conservative.
Okay, so is this October's meeting gonna be October fifteenth?
No, October is, it's gonna be the third.
Yeah, fifteenth.
The third, right. Okay, so what about the first week of October?
October.
Oh, wait, did our September meeting change?
I still have second.
But October will change.
October will change.
Can't do the first, we gotta formally treat September third.
How about October? Six? Seven?
Wait a minute, I thought we were trying to do it in September.
I think he just wants it to be done before, so it could go and affect November one.
Well, if we have an October, we won't have enough time to do it.
What's the time?
Well, we have to do the motion rule development and so it's a minimum forty five, sixty days.
Wow.
Can we get three people for the seventeenth?
When, when are you going away? From when to when?
Seven. I won't be back in six weeks.
Cool. So what? The day you're coming back?
Well, the seventeenth was Friday.
I'm out for the seventeenth.
September?
No, no.
Friday, the, like I said, I'll be here. Well, it's Friday the seventeenth, well, it's September. I'll be here.
Terry, are you around on the seventeenth?
I'm here, yeah.
There you go.
A quorum. Did the two of you call in?
Yeah.
I think it's important that the whole board be.
I agree.
Okay. So we would need a motion to set a, you wanted a workshop or a special meeting?
Workshop.
Workshop, which you can't make decisions at, but you could give direction.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, to have a workshop on September seventeenth at nine thirty.
That's nice. So this workshop, this workshop, we just put everything together, then we approve it at the next meeting?
Yeah, what we envision, the staff would have recommendations, the start of certain sections of the rules. And once you receive those recommendations, you may have other processes to what you change in the rules and give us some direction. And then I would suggest that the next board meeting, you have text of what implement, what you all wanted. And then that would be advertised for a hearing on the phone. So we're talking.
Yeah, which would be October.
Well, by time we have the timeframe.
So you.
It won't be until, you know, it may not be until the meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're going to get everything to the board before the seventeenth?
Correct.
Okay. They do it, we'll.
You'll set up what we're gonna do.
Yes.
ERC, everything.
Ever, any rule.
Any rule.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we need a motion to set a workshop for September seventeenth at nine thirty at the Orchid Cove Clubhouse.
So moved. Seconded. On favor?
Aye.
Pardon me?
She's gonna reserve it.
Thank you.
You'll take care of the notice?
Yeah. Yeah. Chris will take care of it. Okay, mosquito control discussion. This was something you asked for, Russ.
Oh. No, I just wondered where we were. What happened with that? What happened to the county? But that they were going.
The county approved it. And so now it's going to the legislature. And one of the questions was, did the, what did CID board have a opt in or opt out? And you wouldn't have it on.
That was the question.
Yeah.
So the answer is, you get it whether you want it or not.
Yeah. Yes.
How does the cost compare to what we?
It's cheaper. Or to what.
Well, I'm not sure.
No, I think they charge houses more.
Well, they do. It's basically, it's a mileage. It's, it's, yeah, it's a mileage.
Yeah, I did.
I thought Terry did the.
I did a workup on it, and it's pretty much the same or cheaper. I used the mileage rate they said, and I did the how many residents and multiplied it out, and I did it twice. So I'm comfortable with the number.
Yeah, but we'll see.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly. We'll see. That's the whole, you know, I'm gonna get treated maybe once every two weeks. Uh, maybe twice. But then again, it doesn't mean, well, it doesn't mean that we cannot supplement.
No, yeah.
I was gonna say, we could supplement if that they can let you do that.
Yeah, that's the question is how the chemical, how much chemical.
Even though we use the same chemicals they do, I don't know.
Yeah, right. Fiddler's cream sprays and they coordinate mosquito control. So that's something that I have, I'm just having a conversation with them about how to coordinate supplementing working together.
So that's good. Yeah, because he's, he's absolutely right. Because if they decide, well, we can withstand X amount of mosquitoes on you in a, in a ten minute period. And we don't particularly like that, I think.
Yeah.
Even if the residents do, we are, I think they need to change.
Yeah. Oh, we did get the extender. He's been using it for a while now. So when he's out spraying, if you see someone walking, he could, from the cab, he could turn on it. So.
One client called and told him what time he can spray. So that, that didn't go wrong.
That didn't, yeah.
He said he turned it off when he goes by the guy's house.
Yeah, it won't be his right.
Okay, under due business, this was something you asked for also, dormitory vandalism and trespassing.
Yeah, when I went back there one time at night, there were four cars over at the dormitory. Somebody was on the second floor with flashlight looking around. I don't even know if there's a floor there. I don't, I have never been in the building. So, yeah, there were four cars there. And I, and I drove by, came back, made it leave. In fact, when I came back the next time, there was another car there. So I called the cops on them, but I don't know what happened. They probably.
Is there a no trespassing sign on that apartment?
I don't think so. I don't, I'm not sure.
There is side feeding.
Yeah, there's all the feeding inside.
Sure, there's all the feeding.
Yeah. And what about safety reasons? Shouldn't it be fenced?
Yeah, well, the county would have to direct that.
Yeah, yeah.
Have any say in that. But we could contact county code enforcement. Have any say in that, but we could contact county code enforcement and tell them that we would like the building secured, and they will give property over.
Well, it's a hazard, it really is a hazard, like he said, you don't even know if there's a floor on the second floor.
I already an open file on that place, too.
Yes, there is.
That's why I'm on the cameras and stuff, I don't know who's hanging around the water treatment plant, you know, who's driving.
Yeah.
That's it for me.
B is, you've already approved that, that's done, so I think that gets us through all your business supervisor requests.
That's gonna be what Ted does.
That's still good. Anyone? Michelle, Ray, not Phil, Sam, Russ. Terry, you have anything?
No, I don't.
Okay, anyone in the audience? Yes, Ben?
Yes, I have.
Yeah, not yet, a few more minutes.
Could you like, could you step up here so they can get you?
I'm, James, and I have a. Can the residents receive a copy of the appraisal and the LOI?
We could put it on the website.
I, you guys are, the board is elected by the residents, and I really am surprised about what happened, that you allowed something to be sold at appraised value and without going out to market. I know that you voted for going out to market, but you've heard already from the residents here that we really don't want a trailer park of unknown type there, but you've approved it, and I'm, I'm just really surprised at the actions today. So I'm gonna try to get the names of the people who approved it, and, and you guys, and put some comments out. So I'm sorry there aren't more residents here, because I don't think you're representing us very well, so thank you.
If the board would like the appraisal on the website, I believe we can put that on, I could see what Chris could do on that. The LOI, I, we're not gonna put that on.
No, you can't put that on.
I don't know if we could put it on the website, or if somebody asked, or just.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's a public.
Yeah.
Oh, they just have to request.
Have them request it and electronically send it to them, because it's a big document, the appraisal.
The LOI, okay, so you're saying we don't put the appraisal on the website, that if it's requested, we'll provide it?
Yes.
The LOI. So, Mr. Johnson, you may wanna leave your email address with Cal.
Or just send it, you know, it's on the website for record.
Yeah, and the, the person who just spoke, I, I can't see or know who they are, but do, do they have the history of how this has come about?
Yes, but. Um, I have looked at some of.
I can't hear you.
Hold on.
I have looked at some of it, and I know that there are other people who have been in the meetings, I know you had meetings about this, you had a workshop on it. But I, I just agree with you so much that, I mean, my appraised value of my condo is not what I'm gonna be able to sell it for. And especially with the market today and people's attitudes about coming down to this area. It just really, really surprises me that we're going to give it to essentially the first bidder at appraisal value.
Exactly what we're doing.
And there's so many other things to be looking at as far as how it's going to impact the water plant, what they're, we're surrounded by, it's surrounded by public lands. What they're going to do and how that might impact those public lands, there, to me, there's just so many unknowns. And I know that you need the money, that it needs to be sold, but you, you aren't in the red yet, so it seems that you have at least a little bit of time to be learning some more about this before handing it over to the first person.
Well, you say we, you say we have a little bit of time. What are you saying? We need to be in the red?
Well, you aren't in the red yet, I know that you know that.
Do you know how close we are to being in the red?
Structure needs in the future, you're going to have to sell it. You can't make it the dog park thing, okay? I know you have to sell it, but, but you have some time. At, at least, I, I, at least I would be respectful to the residents here to let them see next month a copy of these meeting minutes. So that they can see what the discussions were, so that they're able to give you the input. That, I mean, that's just a month or two to let the people know, either through Nextdoor or some other meeting, of what was discussed today. And then to, to get their input, again, you were elected by them.
And, no, let me just say one thing. We have directed our attorney to make sure that there are places for us to review each and everything as it comes along. So just because it's going to be an RV park, doesn't mean that we don't have some sort of review process on it to be able to say, this is the way we want it to be, because we wanna be respectful of the residents that are here and where the items. So that, that's going to be addressed in the future. And it's not that it, we're just gonna say, okay, here, it's yours, go ahead and do what you want with it. We're not.
No, but you decided on RV park, and again, put it out on the market, maybe there is someone who wants to put some, some nicer homes up in that area that aren't going to have all, all the, the potential impacts to the residents here, and, and on the roads and that.
Would you be willing for section 8 housing to go back there?
Would you be willing for million-dollar condos? That's not an argument, but you gotta.
But it's a reality, it's a reality.
The reality, no, it isn't.
This is, this is.
Reality is testing the market.
Yes, the reality is testing the market. And, and the, the thing you brought up today, that the towers, that other area is going to be on the market now, is going to be attracting people to this area.
And we had a perfect horse race going until the Fed broke. They need the ERCs, and so do they. We shouldn't let it go.
Yeah, so we should at least, you should at least be more respectful to people who elected you, and let them know what was being discussed with this meeting.
You need to read this, you need to read the assessment, everything it says.
Because we just wrote it.
Because there's tons of information there that people.
There is.
Try and understand what's involved with development. This is a very unique property, okay, and it is not the most. Or, it's not the most developer-friendly, it's probably the most developer-unfriendly you could want. Okay, you think if it's, it's like just a regular piece of land out there that you can develop, this is completely. You need to read this, you need to.
I will, and I think the other residents have an opportunity to read it all.
Concerned about.
As the residents have the opportunity to come here every meeting and express their concerns, which you're doing. Next board is not the way, what we're going to listen to, we're going to listen to residents as they come here and talk directly to us.
They, first of all, it's not the best time of year for residents to be down here being able to attend, but also to, to give them an opportunity to look at the discussion today before you do any voting on, on what.
They can sign online, like I am today.
Plus, according to them, there were three players that stepped up all at once, they wanna throw $2 million at, how about that? There can't be that bad, free players, $2 million bucks. So, but we're not gonna throw it out to the public, because somebody might wanna pay more.
It really hasn't been marketed.
We already, one guy put $2 million towards it, and he rejected it.
Okay, it could be another hundred.
Anyway, those are my views.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Online, are there any comments? We've got probably six or seven residents online. No comments from the residents online. A, without none, we're ready for motion to adjourn.
Second. On favor?
Aye.